Give me the thumbs up. Welcome to Centerville Council meeting held on September 7th. We welcome the visitors that we have here with us, both in person and may be joining us online. We look forward to a wonderful meeting tonight and being involved as a community. So let's make sure that we can conduct the business of our meeting by going to my far left and doing a roll call with our council people.
Make a present.
I am present.
Ints present.
Fillmore present.
Present.
That makes all five of our council members present, so we can continue on. Let's do our first kind of prayer, not by Catson and Ints.
Sorry, I've got COVID brain, so I'm, I'll just go with a prayer tonight. Our Father, who art in heaven, we bow our heads before Thee and give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in our lives. We're thankful to live in this community. We're thankful to be surrounded by good people. We give thanks, Father, for those that serve at their own peril in protecting us. Police and fire and other city workers who try their best to do the best for the city. We pray that Thy Spirit might persist in this meeting tonight and that we might be able to communicate well, understand the things that are presented, and make good decisions. And say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmen Ints.
Recording in progress.
Okay. If y'all are rising to meet and report your local meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Always an honor, a pleasure, a privilege to do that. Next on our agenda is an open session. This is an opportunity for members of the community, whether they're in person or not, to chime in and talk about things that may be happening in the community, both good and bad, and anything that may be on your mind. We last night tried to keep your spots for just a couple minutes. So I will open that open session and I'll look for those people that are here to speak. And also Jennifer will help you out if anybody online, so that is not open. Please state your name and where you're from. I forgot that. Thank you.
My name is Gina Hurst, and I live here in Centerville, 955 Keiki Circle. Mayor Wilkinson, city council members and city staff. It is my understanding that the planning commission has listed as one of their priorities this year to do a rewrite of the general plan. I am coming to you tonight with a time-sensitive request. I would like to ask the council to consider applying for a grant from the Wasatch Regional Council for funding for this general plan update or rewrite. The WFRC requires a letter of intent be submitted by September 30th. This is a very simple form that requires basically contact information, our mayor's signature, a brief description of what the project is going to entail, and how much of a grant that we're requesting. At that point, the city may be asked to provide additional information that will be due by December 9th. Should the city be selected, they would then be notified in February, March of 2022, and money would be available in July of 2022. I have specifically asked about strategy in qualifying for these funds. I will forward that information to Brant. But briefly, the WFRC likes to meet the city with their desired wants and needs for a plan. What helps increase the score for funding is if there is a smaller area identified where more analysis is needed. Also, general plan updates that score higher with WFRC are those that need zoning code or a plan to incorporate economic growth goals. I believe that some or all of these strategies could be implemented for Centerville. I'm here tonight to ask the city to consider filing this letter of intent so that if it aligns with our needs, we can potentially utilize grant funds to help us move forward on our general plan update. Again, that deadline is September 30th for the letter of intent. There is no obligation to continue pursuing the grant after this point. The forms that must be completed before December 9th consist of answers that ask for us to address, the city to address, the four main goals for WFRC. Should we qualify for the grant, we would not be able to use funds until July 2022. That lead time is why I am here tonight to ask for consideration for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. And it sounds like that information to our city manager. Thank you. Further comments on the open session, anyone? Do we have anybody online? All right. Then we will move to the first item on the agenda. This is outside of what we just discussed. First item of business is the public hearing on zoning text amendment regarding internal ADUs. Corey?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, this past legislative session with our Utah leaders enacted a bill that requires all municipalities to consider, not consider, to adopt accessory dwelling units as a permitted use within the city. So there are some parameters that are set. A lot of them are set expectations of the state. And that's where you would make these permitted uses within your residential areas. They have some parameters that need to be implemented, I believe, by October 1st. This is the idea that we are a qualifying city that's not a college or university town, so we must allow 75% of our residential areas to be allowed internal ADUs. Internal ADUs are defined by the state. They're inside the primary building of a single-family home, so you have to be a single-family use. And you can have an ADU within the parameters of that home. This does not address the issue that other ordinances or cities adopted in the past where you have a detached one put in a guest house or a rear yard. This is internal to the single-family home. Some people will call them basement apartments, but it could be same-floor level, not necessarily basement, and so forth. They do allow cities some regulatory control. They help out in that regulatory control by indicating that it's owner occupancy. So this is the idea that the owner is living in the primary unit and conducts the accessory dwelling unit. They allow the matters of parking, so the city can add parking, not only for the new ADU, but we can ensure that parking for the existing primary dwelling is in place. This is where an interesting part comes to the state. They said that we can adopt standards that ensure the character of a single-family dwelling in the neighborhood. But interestingly enough, a different bill in the same legislative session says you can't monitor and regulate elements of single-family homes and duplexes. So I'm not quite sure exactly what that meant, but I went with the bill to the planning commission as looking at single-family homes and trying to make sure they're compatible with that. So a couple of highlights for the ordinance, for the sake, for people to understand. We have to adopt them as a permitted use. The recommendation that's coming to you is that that be done by the zoning administrator. The method to that madness, the idea that it be administrative approval at staff, is one, it's a permitted use, so it's like building a single-family home. If somebody came in with a single-family home and wanted to keep the ADU as a part of that single-family home, we would review that in the same permit process associated with that. The second idea is if you set this as a standard under our site plan review, something of that nature, because they are, have to be permitted use, so this would be a site plan style review at the planning commission level. And our ordinances require public hearings for site plan reviews. The concern that I raised with the planning commission, they seem to have agreed with it. There's really not an option out of allowing the permitted use. So the idea of hosting public hearings may send a message that the city can eventually deny it or turn it down based on what the public believes is happening in their neighborhood. So we think it sets ourselves up for failure to implement the state law. So like you would build a single-family home, zoning administrators will look at it, make sure you meet the setbacks, the height, so forth, and approve you. This one will be robust. Our ordinance is fairly robust for the zoning administrators. So I think I want to assure you, be comfortable with the ordinance, because this is what we're implementing. And if something comes in and wants to change later, what's in the pipeline gets approved, and the new ones later would be up to a new standard. So be comfortable with it. One of the things that I feel as a professional planner and also gave to the planning commission is that if we're devoting 75% of our community to the allowance of ADUs, it comes down to the issue of not creating a situation where we do have a default duplex zone. And so one of the things that is pretty robust, the ordinance proposed you is that owner occupancy affidavit requirements. And it's fairly robust, the commitment. It defines more parameters of what owner occupancy means. I think that was quite a discussion with the planning commission. We originally started out at 50% share in ownership of the house, the home itself. The planning commission discussed that at large and recommended it be reduced to 20%. Part of the rationale was if somebody owns a home and they inherit to their children, and if I have 12 children, if I have four children, if I have 15 children, how does the trust work? And they wanted to be more flexible with allowing the inheritance factor, if you will, come into play. So that if there's four children, in this case, 20%, five children, they could have an interest as a trust, but one of the five could leave the home. Other than owner occupancy definition. That was a pretty robust discussion by the planning commission, what that entails. Another thing that's kind of a highlight that was discussed with the planning commission is there are some, in the owner occupancy, is basically saying that you have to live on the premises as a prominent primary use. I believe it's something like six months a year, whichever commission. It came up, the issue that in the initial draft is there might be times where individuals won't be present in the home for a short duration. Short duration is a relative term. If you are in the military and you leave, does that negate the opportunity to keep the home? If you're in a military leave assignment, then it would come back and be that even later. You also have ecclesiastical roles and service opportunities. You also have education. You also have the idea of care of someone out of state. You have to leave, care for someone out of state. And so there is a section in there trying to allow some temporary absences. And that discussion became robust. What's the timeframe of that? Initially, it started out three years, because I know that there are a couple of years for a master's degree. Some service opportunities might extend three years. And so the debate came out, well, there's a hard line of three years. So I think they came down to three years and one month. But it doesn't address how many times you can go on a service opportunity to qualify. And so these are kind of those balances you're trying to make. Allow people to live their lives, but at the same time, make it that this is your home. This is the place you reside. This is the place you control. And that's the idea of not having it as a default duplex zone. Another element, I think, is very strong. This is probably pushing the one side of the state law, saying you can ensure the design of a single-family home is compatible with the neighborhood, yet you can't say whether it's cornice, brick, what type of siding. So what was chosen is to regulate the design. So if you're making additions to your home, if you're designing it as part of your original home, we expect that your window sizing, your eaves, your roof pitches, things of that nature match the home. It's not something starkly different than the design of the home. They also address entrances, the entrance is to move on something from the street that you come in from the side, you have to be distance from the property line, so that you're not trying to do a door right on the property line with a cover and have a problem with your setbacks on the side entry. So those are some of the robust things that the ordinance, and it's currently drafted before you. I think that covers most of it. It would be quite a task if, once adopted, to get the forms and paperwork here and the owner occupancy drafted, so people can do this. Like I said, we have till October 1st. The reason October 1st is lining out there is if you want to exempt certain areas of your city from allowance, you have to do that by that date, otherwise it's permitted in your residential zone. So we're trying to get that date. We've chosen with the recommendation to you and the planning commission is to do our single-family zones, our AL and our RL zones. That's probably, I don't measure it technically, but it's a dominant amount for residential area. There'll be incompetence issues if we want to exempt them. I did have a call from a council member asking about, can you include single-family units that are in your other type of residential zones? Because this one proposed to you as only the AL, which is the single-family zone, with the ability to have agriculture, limited agriculture uses with animals. Your RL is your single-family zone only. What about the single-family zones in the residential median? Lisa and I had a conversation this afternoon about that. Look at the state law, and I was uncomfortable initially that you don't want to go into a zone and treat one end user in that zone differently than when treating another user in that same zone. We went back and looked at the state law, Lisa did. And she does typically, if we're in the same median, kicks me under the table and says, this is residential areas, and so I feel comfortable, hopefully, I'm speaking for Lisa, that single-family homes in RM would probably still be a potentially good thing to consider. So that would be changed from what's recommended to you if you want to consider it. One thing that's unique about, the state law allows you to restrict them. Some old homes can't be converted to ADUs, lots under 6,000 square feet. You can choose to live them, so if they're 6,000 square feet or less, you can live them and not have an ADU. I checked most of the residential units in the RM zone, so this would be like the Brighton Homes project. I'm trying to think of some quick others off the top of my mind, but their best, Brighton Homes is 3,500 to 4,000 square feet. So even though they're single-family homes, it wouldn't allow because of the 6,000-foot lot size cap. So if you're looking at handful homes, is what I'm trying to mean. Handfuls relative, I didn't individually count. We're not talking about 50 and 100. We're talking about 15 and 20 that will probably have an ability in the RM zone. So if you want to delete that, you can. If you want to stick to the planning commission's recommendation, you can. But if you do want to do the RM zone, you would need to end useless to add the RM zone in for the single-family unit. I think it's a low risk, and here's why. North Salt Lake adopted bill ordinances, a few other cities have adopted bill ordinances long before the state legislature passed this. We're maybe getting a 1%. So I think in a college town, you're probably higher. And that's why some of the numbers should be in a college town, without a college town. So we'll probably see a few upfront because the crisis of housing, the state has stepped in and says, you gotta allow this. I think it would be a little more permanent for those who make an investment and do an ADU. But if you do a simple one where you're just using a basement, you don't have to do a lot of upgrades. I think it's a plus or minus like short-term rentals. I explained that earlier. We have short-term rentals that are not allowed in the city. If you go every quarter to half a year, you see the ones that were advertised drop off a bit. And the new ones might pop up because they realize this isn't the right thing. And so I think we'll probably not experience a mass change from now. But as a planner, things in the future. We didn't think of COVID and work-from-home popularity 20 years ago, five years ago. Housing crisis in crunch. We're seeing some stabilization in the market a little bit. Numbers come way down. So I don't know how popular this will be, but you don't get to choose it on popularity. And so the planning commission, I believe this one is 5-0 for the members that arrived. I like the change. They added three years, one month. They added, they changed it from 50% owner occupancy to 20% owner occupancy. Interesting to it, I don't believe there's any other significant, other few small changes they added. So the recommendation is to approve. Hopefully, you might approve.
Corey, do you want to just say right there?
Yeah. The battery question is coming. I was trying to run. Yeah, good try.
My, one of my main questions is tied to what you just mentioned, that some people might try it and then say, hey, this isn't my gig. And so I was really curious about this termination part of the agreement. So could you explain that to us and why we would think that we would need to require someone to remove features that they've put in their home if they are no longer wanting to actually call it an ADU and rent it out?
Yeah, that's a strategic level of trying to establish. My microphone not working. I do not karaoke, by the way, so I will not give you a rendition of that. You know, it's back to the ADU that if you have a transfer of ownership and it's no longer used, it's how long do you allow that vesting to occur? So an example is, is we expire approvals in the city, one year after your approval or two years within completion of your project. If you fail to do that, we expire it, because we don't want a perpetual approval hanging out 30 years down the road and coming back and waving the flag and saying, oh, yeah, I know you don't want to do this anymore, but here's my right to do it because it never expired. And so I lean on that, just every time you create an ordinance, you have a vesting period that's associated with it.
So the question I have, though, which I understand your point, and my question is, wouldn't that be as simple as stating that the approved ADU use is null and void after a certain amount of time not being used? But it says here, upon such termination of an internal ADU.
You remove an element.
The owner shall remove one or more features that make up an internal ADU, but not, including but not limited to living, sleeping, kitchen, electrical, gases.
Now, this matches what you define, you, meaning the city, because legislative body in the past has said that a single family is, we defined a dwelling, we defined a dwelling unit. We do not allow second kitchens in the home unless you sign a second kitchen affidavit and it's recorded against the property. So what we're saying is, is we don't want default dwelling units in the basement and upstairs unregulated. So even in our single-family homes, our current restriction is you can't have two kitchens unless you sign the affidavit, record it against the property, that it is a single-family unit only. And that's why we had to go back into the ordinance under the suggestion of the planning commission to say, if somebody's already done a second kitchen and now they want to convert the basement, we've got to terminate the second kitchen letter and do the affidavit on the thing. So what we're trying to do is say, look, there is no two dwellings. And if you don't use it as an ADU, we want it expired and terminated and removed. You can come back later, so it's easy. The second, the kitchen is the, I've got accessory buildings, five or six, in the last five, seven years, that build these guest houses, but they do not put the kitchen in, because hot plates, crock pots and everything don't count as kitchen facilities. And that's how they stay there. And then if they ever want to do an ADU unit, they can just replace that with, back with the permanent kitchen facilities. And that's what we're saying is, this is our definition of single-family home. If you don't do it under the ADU, we want you going back to the definition of a single-family home.
Or could we just add the line, or alternatively, file for the second kitchen?
I think you just leave that, and that's just an option that they can do, because they could terminate it in other ways.
The reason I ask is I think that what we want to see happen is that we know this is being done anyway. And we want to make this as user-friendly as possible so that people actually are making it legal and working through the city. So to me, this language sounds a little over the top, right? If you do this and then stop using it, then you have to tear out a kitchen.
Yes, that's a value judgment. We're just doing it on the way your ordinances are adopted today. We treat single-family with a fine definition. And I'm just saying, we wrote in there that says, you no longer do the ADU, you go back to that definition. If you're not worried about that anymore, we can loosen up both parameters. We can loosen up the kitchen, second kitchen letter, and let people have a second kitchen.
Yeah, I think that's part of the state's message, right?
I agree with Tammy. I think that that's.
Yeah, that's entirely a value judgment to you of how you want to do it. We're just doing it off the way we currently protect and define single-family homes.
Thanks for reminding us of that. We'll fix it.
Well, and I think.
Remember, you're the legislative body.
We can fix it.
Almost do everything you want to do.
No, I agree, I agree with Tammy on that one. And I think we said you couldn't have a second kitchen in order to prevent these. So now that they're legal, we're not going to be stressing over them, so it should be an easy thing to.
Hey, do anything to make my job easier. I don't have to, you don't stress, I don't stress.
Well, it won't make it necessarily easier, because it's governed by construction and fire codes. So if they're putting in a second kitchen, it's just as regulated as it was before. So I look at that as, that's a dual edge on that one. We may make it simpler, but that language in there says it's going to be hard, because that was part of our original objection, was is that the construction codes were cost prohibitive for doing this.
Good point.
So that is another question that I have, is what do we know about, along with this bill, have they done the building code research and created anything to create more uniformity of understanding of what these ADUs fall under?
They did. It was not extensive and pervasive in the sense of trying to rewrite the construction codes. They simply took it out of the two-family dwelling category. So now that you put in another dwelling, it's not counted as a two-family if it's under an ADU of, adopted, you know, by the state and the city. And so you eliminate a lot of the two families. So that's the dampering through the fire units, you know, from, meaning that if you have a common heating unit and you're using it for both, there had to be a fire damper in it in order to prevent one from igniting the other, depending on what happened. And so the two-family was removed. It wasn't extensive code. From my recollection, it wasn't extensive code, but it's treated as a single-family dwelling.
It's treated as a single-family instead of a two.
Now, I mean, it still doesn't solve some of the illegal ones in its entirety. Unauthorized, I shouldn't call them illegal. Unauthorized ones out there, because we don't know the circumstances. Like, I perceive a couple of them are detached, so this will not fix that situation. I won't say they are, because I don't know for sure, but my perception is.
They haven't applied for their kitchen yet, so you don't know.
Yeah.
So what about parking? Talk to me about parking contention, especially as we enter the winter and, you know, we have our snow days and can't be on the streets.
Right.
How did the planning commission anticipate dealing with that? And the natural friction that's going to exist when I can't park in front of my house because the neighbor across the street has decided that he's going to sublet and has eight cars as part of that ADU?
That's the harder one. And I don't think the planning commission wrestled with it extensively. What the state does is allow us to add a parking stall for the unit. And so what our ordinance did is say, okay, we have two required for a single-family home. So that's our normal standard requirement. And the state allows us to add additional for the ADU unit. But here's where the tension and your question goes to. We can no longer define how big your ADU is. And so, you know, before, you controlled the sizes and the demand and the occupancy by controlling the size of the unit, how large it is. We can't do that anymore. And so it can be 50% of your home, so it's a 50-50, and you're having three parking stalls. And if you have, like I did, six children within eight-year timeframe, because family dynamics and all driving, and I looked worse than normal single-family homes for a short duration, but so did my bill for insurance. So I think the tension still exists. I think you're right, it brings it up. They allow us to add one in there, but it's the tension of 50% of your home is, and there's two families in there, and two families have children. That could create that tension. And the state recognized it a little bit by changing the family definition. And they rec, the state recognized it a little bit by changing the family definition. You know, you used to be able to do these related and unrelated issues, now it's just... I don't remember what it was, Lisa, now off the top of my head. We've got to fix our ordinance with the family definition, though.
Was that part of this bill?
No. It's part, it was part of, it was a response to the bill to change the family definition that they used to have.
This year that happened, last year. Do you know what they changed?
They took out the word unrelated, so we're really not sure what they were trying to accomplish.
As is often the case.
So, so what are your suggestions, though? I mean, I see this as, this, there may be areas where this is a problem. I know in the avenues, you have to get a parking permit if you live in the area to avoid over-parking during certain, certain seasons when there's festivals in, in Salt Lake, San Francisco, you have to park on this side one week and the next side the other week for trash pickup. I don't think we're going to get that extreme, but I, I can perceive that in some areas where this would be very popular in the city, that we are going to have this friction. And I don't have a resolution for the resident who's lived there and their neighbor decides they need extra income. I mean, I, I want to know how to deal with that problem.
Well, the first one, that there's a little bit of structure in the ordinance to begin with because, and, and again, I think it goes back to, like the second kitchen letter, you could delve a little deeper into the parking if you wanted to, to parse it out. But what the ordinance currently said is, is that your parking doesn't count, your driveway's not counted as your parking. It's, it's where your parking is supposed to be. So if it's in your two-car garage, your parking is supposed to be in your two-car garage. You provide the two-car garage. So if you expanded in the past somehow your garage and converted it, and now you're trying to put your parking out in your driveway, that violates the ADU ordinance. Your parking has to be behind the setback according to this structure somewhere. So if you converted your garage, you'll need to go to the side of your house or to the back of your house, which could pose some problems in that of itself. But then the third one also has to be behind the setback. But let's just say that you have a two-car garage, you have your trailer in the backyard down an RV pad, you can park the third car in front of that trailer. We don't prohibit the tandem parking in that situation. Or you could replace your cars somewhere else on the site and park the third tandem, but it has to be behind the front setback. And so it's trying to, in some sense, say, make some parking available and quit using your garage as a storage unit. Now, can we make people stop using their garages as a storage unit? No. And maybe that's where more teeth comes in, just thinking off the top of my head, that we verify that your existing parking is behind the setback and made available, and you agreed to make that available instead of using it as a storage unit. So you can put some cars that are in the parking stalls and in your driveway areas. Will that get them all? But it gets your driveway, your garages, your third car, and, and some RV parking before it starts spilling out onto the street. But if you have ten cars, that's probably not going to happen. And so now it does come back into, it could spill out to the street, or are you going to use your wintertime parking? Is there some type of, we've not done a lot, much in the city about restricting parking and permits and enforcement. And I think that comes down to a little bit of, the state was requiring us to do this, how much do you want to think of in preventative? And how much do you want to experience, how many start coming? And do we want to address the parking a little bit later?
Well, and if, we don't see it as a problem yet, and we can always make amendments later if we do.
It's called the leap of faith, I'm saying.
And to your, to your point, though, with our city being a family-friendly city, there are many single-family homes with just one family that have overflowing parking spaces being used regularly.
But I, I don't want to insinuate that the tension's not there, and you're right. There's, there'll be some circumstances. How often and frequently yet to be determined.
That tension's usually worst in the summer when everyone puts their, you know, toy haulers out on both sides of the three, one-lane roads. That's when you start to see the tension.
And their fifth wheel stays parked out there perpetually for the summer.
Right, right. So I, I, I don't think that we have to solve the issue. I'm just, I'm just trying to be forward-thinking and say, okay, well, both residents have rights here. This one's being forced on us by the state. So what is, how do we preserve the rights and that peaceful coexistence between two neighbors who suddenly didn't ask for their, their, all the frontage of their home to be taken up with cars?
Yep.
Further questions for Corey before we go to public hearing?
Um, I have a couple of questions. So, I'm concerned on where it says owner occupied and that the owner has to own at least twenty percent of the property. Thought I had a phone call.
Bill has a couple of questions. Councilman Ritz.
Oh, okay. So, total, total thoughts. Okay, so on the twenty percent, I am concerned, I do not, I want this to be for older people who are trying to stay in their homes, and younger people that can't afford a home, that can maybe afford the home and put somebody in the basement for a while while their family grows, and then they can up their income. So I want to, I wanted to help those groups of families. I don't want it to become duplexes or for developers. And I'm worried with a twenty percent occupancy rate, we're going to have-
Ownership.
Ownership.
Or ownership, yeah. We're going to have developers somehow figure out a, a loophole through that. And when we talked about this, when the state put it out, you said ownership. I assumed you had to own the home. So I'd like to know, I liked your fifty percent better. I'm even willing to go higher if it's, you know, but yet, if it's a joint, it, we, we would need to also put in that, you know, if it's a married couple and, and they, both their names are on the house, obviously that should be done too. I'd like you to address that.
Sure. I mean, this was extensive at the planning commission, if you, if you listen to the transcripts. And, and the, the initial model was the fifty percent because that's what has been used in the cities past of fifty percent ownership. And so I just simply repeated rather than reinvent the wheel. Cities had done that several times in the past, long before this state legislature got involved at fifty percent ownership. I think it's trying to address that very issue. The intent of the ADU, let me step back a little bit before I can get that. The ownership occupancy at the state level, as I recall, when it came with this legislative session, was the, the discussion of owner occupancy became a little bit problematic, particularly for, is it Grand County where MoAB's located? Because their idea was, is that if you take an ADU unit, it will end up in a short-term rental no matter what because of the high demand of lodging there. And so they wanted something that did something better than that. That's where the state took the owner occupancy and called it owner occupancy without a percentage definition, as I recall, and also added in, it had to be thirty days or more, or more than thirty days, something of that nature. That's how they satisfied that. So we're, we're stepping out of the short-term rental and having a midterm rental or a long-term rental of thirty days or more with owner occupancy. That's when I took over the bill, looked at the other city ordinances around the state that adopted it, they start out with a fifty percent. And so that's where I started, was to defining that. I think it is, is a legislative decision. The planning commission, as you recall, was much more generous than staff's suggestion as a fifty percent. They wanted to take into account a little bit of, how do we treat a tr, a trust? You know, so what, what does it meant by the trust if it's in some type of trust situation? So that was a discussion that came about. And then if that trust has multiple members, what does it mean? So this is the idea that a, the couple has a home, they create an ADU to supplement their fixed income that they have, they pass away or achieve a, a life event that has to put some other location to, to live out the remaining years of their life, and the children inherit that or they're part of the trust. Because a lot of people put their, their homes in some type of trust. What does that mean? Well, if it's four kids, you know, is, can, can go to the four kids, but that's not fifty percent. If, even if one of the children needs it and wants to live in it, they're not fifty percent. So can, can the four siblings talk? And does a twenty-five percent interest be okay and at least one of the siblings can take over that home and live in it and absorb the, the owner occupancy status of that? There were pushes to put that at ten percent. Lisa, is that, there were pushes to put that at five and ten percent. The, the, the planning commission felt like some reasonableness should be if, if, if the trust is built with multiple members, and they just landed at twenty. So that puts, you know, you've got a fifth, fifth, uh, call into that as long as you're living into it. But I, I, you know, I, I'm comfortable with the fifty percent. You know, if, if you call out seventy-five percent, just for an example, you know, how does that mean for a couple and joint tenant? You know, my wife owns a hundred percent, so she'd kick me out and, and I wouldn't be living in the unit anymore if it's how you die. Tongue in cheek, but, but you know, how do you handle that if, you know, just to make sure that, that you're comfortable with the ownership amount? A fifty percent's reasonable to me because we're, we're really intending to try to make it owner occupied. If you want to extend it to where a children in a trust could take it over and add to it, that's when you start reducing it below the fifty percent.
Robin, I definitely wanted to debate that one after the public hearing because I have some thoughts on it as well.
Well, and it is part of the discussion, but I also think that there's a lot of value in asking our questions to Corey and getting his feedback about what might work, what doesn't work, then have the public hear.
Right, right. I just didn't want us to arrive at a, at a decision.
So, I just think that it's, it's a little dicey when you're saying the twenty percent and, oh, by the way, you can be gone for this long and it still counts as you being the owner. I think we're, we're diluting the owner-ness, the owner presence on both sides.
Yeah, I think that's where you're playing your risk is, is, you know, the owner occupancy is at this level, but we have the exceptions for, for absence of leave. You know, that came down to that, what if, what if I go leave for a bachelor's, I leave for a master's, I leave for a PhD? You know, how many times can you leave? I think that was briefly talked about and they just settled back and went with the three years and, and then if you can't go back, you have to renew, you have to renew your agreement for the leave exception.
So this, this question might be more for Lisa, but I'm wondering how creative we could get as far as other alternatives, like an exception for a trust and then being able to apply and prove that it's family members or a line in here that says fifty percent ownership, but can, it could be a family member that's living in your place, some, something like that?
Yeah, the planning commission talked about that very idea, and I think sta, I, I was concerned about making exceptions. I, I think that, and to me, it doesn't, there's no distinction between people owning it and an entity owning it. So that was the first idea was, if it's in an entity or a trust, let's divide it out and you can have ten people. And I said, well, how is that any, you know, I, I don't think we should penalize people that own it as, you know, persons. So I, I think, I'm hesitant to create exceptions because then, you know, staff has to analyze those. And to me, I couldn't, if we're going to do exceptions, I would like objective criteria to make those decisions. And I think we were persuasive in arguing to the planning commission, let's try this out. I mean, this is mandated by state law. Let's be conservative in our first go-around. You can always amend it if, if you're not getting enough people coming in or, or these interesting things come up. I, I give the planning commission credit. It was brilliant to say, well, wait a minute, ownership, we just said, you know, a person. And so it is true because there's a lot of people that have their property in trusts or LLCs or however they want to own it. But remember, you know, it does have to be your primary residence. So even if it was at twenty percent, one ownership person of that has to be that. But I think Councilwoman Ivy brought up a good point, but yes, you still have that. You can go away for three years. So it's just a balancing, and, and I think you can certainly discuss that.
I, my, my concern is, we're talking, I think we're, we're overthinking some of this, as Corey said, maybe, you know, we'll get one percent. Gosh, maybe we'll double and we'll get two percent. So we're not going to have a ton. And then we're going to have the chances that we have this trust, that we have one person that wants to live in it and a family that doesn't sell it. I mean, I think we're really reaching out here, but I don't think we're really reaching out, that we could have a few developers if they can figure out a loophole that come in here and buy five or ten homes through that loophole, and they can put this person's name on it and let them look like they're owning twenty percent of the home and, and then renting it out and having, taking over a neighborhood with five or six people. That's my concern is, I want to protect the neighborhood so we don't have, I seen that on the neighborhood, the old neighborhood up above here, and they came in years ago. I think Tammy was on at the time when it was all multifamily and every old house that went up for sale was sold like this and made into a duplex. And the neighborhood's like, wait a minute, we're single-family homes and now we've got eight duplexes on our road. So that's kind of what I'm trying to prevent. I think I would have, I would be very uncomfortable with anything less than fifty percent because I, I want to discourage a developer to find a loophole to come in and, you know, obviously we can watch that and close a loophole if we find one, as, as you've said, we, it's not finalized. But I, I would feel good about fifty percent, but that's, and then my, I'll be really quick because I'm taking more than my fair share of the time. Then when we talk about reasons that they don't have to live in the home, I am a little concerned about education because, like you said, you could use that forever if you wanted to. You could be online somewhere and be, you know, I'm living in Logan, but I'm online and I'm renting out my house down here. And the other one that I was concerned about was a job relocation. If you relocate, really what you're doing is renting out your house. Well, it's not fair for you to rent out your house and rent out your ADU because you're not really living there. So I would like to know everybody else's opinion on those two things.
I think those are the debatable issues.
So I have a couple additional questions for Corey.
I know we have a council member in, so let's not forget him.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I've got a couple as well.
Go ahead, Bill.
Um, no, let's go ahead with, with the ones that Robin was in the middle of. I just don't want it to go away before we're done.
No, I'm done. Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, we're making notes if we need to discuss this after the public hearing as well, Councilman. So go ahead with yours.
Uh, the, I, I'm curious about the seventy-five percent of the, uh, single-family areas being converted and covered. What you've done doesn't really deal with that. What was the reasoning behind the seventy-five percent needs to have it available?
Uh, that's a great question. I don't have an answer what happened in the committee in the legislative debates on why the, the exclusion, but there, the assumption is, is that there were at least arguments made that some areas ought to be protected from that, for lack of better terms. What, what the reasoning of that is, I don't know. And I know that when I went to our APA chapter training and, and our league representative, um-
Catherine.
Nicole. Nicole.
One of the things that I have an issue with, and it goes back to Georgia's comment on parking. If you look at cul-de-sacs, where parking is at a premium, um, I'm wondering if we could exclude all cul-de-sacs from the provision because they need to be protected because parking's at such a premium anyway.
Well, that's an interesting, uh, an idea. I mean, if, you know, I don't know how we would, we'd have to kind of go back in and reanalyze the seventy-five percent, how much is eaten up in cul-de-sacs.
I understand, that's one question.
And, and, you know, I, I, the advice that we were getting from the APA chapter and the advisory is, don't go down the road of exclusion if you don't really need to. Because to justify that becomes difficult. So I agree with you that parking on cul-de-sac and snow, snow storage on cul-de-sacs are, are difficult, but, you know, if you're, if you're on the neck of the cul-de-sac, if part of your house is in the neck and part of it is on the cul-de-sac, is that excluded? You know, you start getting into the, into the, you know, splitting hairs on, on where we're going to allow and draw the line on somebody that can, you know, do it or not do it. Do we do it on narrow frontages where you're only sixty feet versus Ford Canyon when you have three hundred feet? Is that another place? I, I just think it opens up a can of worms. So I realize the inconvenience of it, but I think we start getting into two areas that make it look like we're resisting the state more than we're accommodating the intent. But you can disagree with me all you want because this is just a recommendation from me.
And so with the state taking this massive legislative fiat against, you know, land use planning authority, can we now tell them, no, we're not, we're not going to do anything more about affordable housing because you took care of that with your seventy-five percent?
I, I, yeah, that's a good one. I, I will go back, I'll go back to my quick default soapbox.
It's, it's right up the, the same thing. Because if we adopt this, it seems to me we do get to say, we've met all your criteria for affordable housing now.
Yeah, I, I'm frustrated with the state assuming that affordable housing is a zoning-for-dollars issue and it's all about zoning, when I think it's really the- Yeah, I'm frustrated with the state assuming that affordable housing is a zoning for dollars issue and it's all about zoning when I think it's really the marketplace. I think we're seeing that. I think that message is coming across that it's the marketplace that's creating it. I think to some extent you could postulate that kind of response. I think where it comes back to get you is twofold in the moderate income housing. One, you're required to adopt three strategies. So you could say our ADUs take care of one, but we're still required two more strategies. And the second place I think is that there's still the hanging threat of grant monies and distribution of monies through Wasatch Front Regional Council. That if you're not complying with your moderate income housing plan, it can be held against you and disqualify you for funds.
I'm just looking for the upside in this. If that's the upside, if we get to say that's one of the three strategies already defined for us, then great.
I think you get the one.
That should be one of them because that was one of them on our list.
I think you get the win on one.
Put on that before the.
Now, how aggressive do you get on the other two? Yeah, it's up to the legislative body to decide.
Staff's excited to write our annual report this year.
Because you got to win.
Report affirmatively.
Okay, I have a couple really specific questions about the ordinance.
Did we get councilmember Ann's questions at all?
Councilmember Ann, did you have anything more or is that it?
No, that was it. Thanks.
I'm wondering about why specifying the eight foot set, the 10, doors having to be on the 10-foot setback versus the eight-foot setback.
Yeah, the issue is, is that your distance between buildings and your emergency egress is six foot. And so the issue that we're trying to address is, is that, one, the further away from the property line, the more compatible that entry is going to be. And two, is you have the issue that somebody may want to do a downstairs well where it fills up with water. They want to maybe put a covering over it and we're trying to still keep a setback available to that property line.
I do understand that, but you know, what if someone's already built their home and their basement entrance would make the most sense on the eight-foot side?
You have three other foot sides that you can work with. That would be my answer. It may not be the most convenient, but when a zoning ordinance, the most convenient.
I mean, it's two feet. How strongly do you feel that needs to be in there or is that kind of splitting hairs as well?
You're gonna, you're just, coming and going from that entrance is going to be the place of contention. I know it's only two feet, but if you start seeing, let's get back to the accessory dwelling, not accessory, accessory buildings. We're five feet from property lines on one that's under controversy right now. It's seven feet from the property lines and people still feel it's too close.
But that's a new structure, right?
This would be new to adding the entrance to the, to the home and you're not used to having it there. So I'm just trying to say, hey, setbacks have a meaning. Let's not violate that. But if you want to go to the property line with that, I'm, it's easy for me.
And then my other question was you prohibited the using of separate utilities. So one of the limitations in past versions is, especially with the building code bumping them into the duplex definition, is the requiring of separate utilities. So it's great to not require it, but I was surprised to see in this the prohibiting of it. So was there a reason for that or could we loosen that up and allow homeowners to create a separate utility if they would like?
You are more than willing to change at any parameter. I just caution you because the idea is that these are single family homes. When you start developing infrastructure to a single family home that is, makes an opportunity in the future to utilize it separate. Separate billing, separate renting, separate stuff, you start changing the nature. And remember, we also don't regulate the size and so we don't collect the impact fees to our water lines. We don't collect the impact fees to beyond the second, first unit for fire. We don't collect the, what's park impact fee, the fire impact fee, the water development fees. And you start establishing new lines, new meters, we're not collecting those fees because under the current draft, they're exempted in your density. They're not counted towards your density and they're exempted from the impact fees. And so do we want infrastructure supporting those units on a permit basis absent of those fees?
And so the feeling also is that it helps encourage the owner occupancy because they're the ones having to figure out how to recoup the costs of the additional.
And how, and how, basically as a landlord, how committed are you to?
Dealing with all that.
Dealing with it all, yeah. And that's the reason. But you could change it.
That would also help probably so that we don't get, you know, a ton of people in the ADU. If you're paying the whole utility bill, you're probably not going to rent to a 12-person group as opposed to, so I would agree with that. How about on Tammy's in order to kind of go a little both ways on the side of the home that the door is on? If it's an already existing door in the home, they're allowed to use it for the smaller side. But if they have to create a new door, they have to put it on the bigger side.
Then you run into the same problem you have with the parking. Now you've got a neighbor who is, has somebody walking by they don't know at whatever hours of the day and night that's up against the fence line. So you got to think of, you got to think of that a person on the other side too. They have rights in this and they may not be really happy with the fact that, you know, they may like you, but they don't know this person who keeps coming and going. And if you're not successful in keeping a tenant and that there's somebody there new all the time, you're going to have, you're going to have people worried about their own personal safety if they, you know, wouldn't. And so that buffer is just adding to the distance they're away from that house.
And that can be part of our debate. I just want to make sure I got your viewpoint on those before the public hearing. We'll come from there. That was it. Thanks.
Don't run too far though.
I think we got all our questions for Cory asked so far. Let's go to the public hearing part. So now what we have is we have, this is an issue where we don't have any respondent, obviously. So we have a public hearing on the zoning text amendment for the internal ADUs. That means anybody that is here or online can chime in on this issue. Just please come to the microphone and state your name and where you're from. If, so that public hearing is now open. Will you be, usually give it a few seconds to allow the, Bill calling in to catch up? Be able to see if there's any online. I think we've given enough time. Seeing no comments from the public, we will close the public hearing and those items that we brought up and maybe some others that may come up, let's discuss further. So.
Just had one. Come on.
We have one come on?
Go back to it or is it too late?
That's a Lisa question, but I could say yes.
I say yes because we're.
Reopen it.
I'll open it back up. So this public hearing for the ADUs, I will reopen because we did have somebody come online. So that person online, please identify yourself, where you're from and your comment about the zoning text amendment on internal ADUs. See there?
We should probably say out loud, sorry, we should probably say out loud for our YouTube audience, do we want to?
I don't know if you're calling for me to unmute.
Yes. Have you got a comment about ADUs?
I don't know if you're calling for me to unmute.
Yes. Have you got a comment about ADUs?
I do.
Name and where you're from and your comment.
I do.
Name and where you're from and your comment.
I have, my name is Heather McKenzie Campbell and I had to turn off my YouTube because it's echoing. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you. Go ahead. Perfect.
I can tell you can hear me. My concern is listening to the discussion about 50% ownership occupancy and then discussing the actual ownership of the home seems to be two different things. I have a home next door to my house that is on the market that has a second kitchen. And my opinion is that if a home is in a trust and there is, say, five children that have a percentage of that trust, at least one of those family members must be the owner that occupies the home. Whether or not they own 5%, 20%, 50% of the actual ownership. And then I think the other issue is that an owner is occupying 50% of the floor space. And whether that's the number you choose, I think those are two different things. And my final comment is I enjoy looking out my window and I don't like to necessarily have cars parked in front of my house that might be living one or two doors down. Because I might have company that comes over that needs to park in front of my home. So I do think that there needs to be some type of requirement for parking, at least parking spaces on the property of an ADU. Or in front of their home on the street. And since I can't hear because it was echoing, I'm going to say thank you for listening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Heather. Well-stated. We heard what you said and we made notes to that. Goes along with some of the things that we've been discussing, so thank you. Anybody further? Anybody, one last chance in the hall? Okay, the public hearing for the ADUs is now closed and we will go back to discussion or further questions for Cory. So I have a number of items listed here. I got parking, I got 20% ownership, I got owner occupied exemptions, cul-de-sac parking, other parking and the setbacks. I may have missed some, so.
The removal of. Ground entrance.
The removal of the.
And what zones you want it in.
Yeah. Okay.
And what definition are we using for an owner occupant?
Yeah, that's the owner percentage. Maybe if you want me to respond to the last few questions, do we now close that public comment hearing again?
I did close it, yes. Go ahead, Lisa.
I think it's problematic to require that the owner occupy 50% of the internal dwelling because the state, so the state law says we have to allow these in single family dwellings, other than the 25% we want to exclude. And it says, except as provided in three and four. We cannot restrict the total lot size, the street frontage, or the size of the internal accessory dwelling unit in relation to the primary dwelling. Which is a backend way of saying you can't require that the owner, because the owner may want to live in the smaller space and then, you know, so anyway, I don't think we can do that under the statute, but we can certainly look into it if you're very interested. I also want to point out that the state law, again, just says that a municipality may and only may include one additional onsite parking space for the eternal accessory dwelling unit. The way I read that is that we can't require two onsite. So what you can talk about though, and Cory can explain this better, is, you know, what qualifies as onsite. But it also says if you're converting your garage to the ADU, you can then require that they replace that existing onsite. So I do think it would be problematic to address parking any further than what the very comprehensive ordinance already does. And the interesting question about cul-de-sac is that we're not allowed to regulate street frontage. Is the cul-de-sac issue a street frontage issue? Because I can't find an exception in three and four that allows us to address a minimum street frontage.
And to the caller's point, we can't regulate who parks where under any circumstance, ADU or not, as far as street frontage, it's public space.
Yeah, but if they're, if they're in the ADU based on the ordinance, they need to be parking on the site. So if they're parking in front, the neighbor decides to come over and say, you need to park on the property, they have a right to do that.
No, because the ordinance only requires that an official space is provided. It does not regulate where they park.
You could fill your whole garage with storage and it does not require, yeah, you're not.
Yeah, we're going to have problems with this. I can, I see it's coming.
Lisa, will you read that part about not regulating the lot size again?
Yeah, so it says, except as otherwise provided in subsection three and four, a municipality may not establish any restriction or requirement for the construction or use of an internal ADU, including a restriction or requirement governing the size of the internal ADU in relation to the primary dwelling, the total lot size or the street frontage. Now, when you go to three and four, it says you can limit the lot size to six, a minimum of 6,000 square feet.
I was getting nervous.
And so that's why I'm saying you have, it says you can't regulate any of these, except as provided in three and four. And that, so anyway, these other regulations that you're trying to add, we have to find an exception in three and four to regulate those. But there are some exceptions.
I'm glad there are some exceptions because that was making me really nervous. I mean, it was, it was scary already, but.
And then there's a page, there's a page and a half of exceptions.
I think one thing that's in our purview is the absence waiver. And I think it's way, way wide and open to abuse. I think that military, medical, you know, are easy ones. Ecclesiastical thing, you know, I'm sure you could figure that out as well. Personal illness, educational pursuits, sabbatical leave, job relocation, none of those work for me because, you know, what constitutes a personal illness? I just don't like cold weather and I disappear for eight months of the year or three years and then come back. I just think those ones are way too open.
I think the more interesting question though is, in my mind, if we stick with the three years and one month, then I'm not so concerned about, be in particular about the reason. And so the more interesting question is three years and one month, how many times and with what space in between? That's where I think our more accurate control is.
Well, theoretically, under the way that this is written, if you had a trust with five people, they could buy five homes, all apply for waivers for educational pursuits. And then you've got a controlled block of properties that have no owner occupants for three years. And then looking at the state law, it looked like to become an owner occupant is 180 days of occupancy is all you need. So that's not much. And maybe I'm reading wrong. I was just looking up what the owner occupied was under state code. So to me, that creates a business, and I think you have to ask yourself, what is the, what is the whole reason why they put owner occupied in there? As the kind of backbone of this whole thing. And if you're looking at it from that perspective, from my, from my point of view, that means it's not a business. It's meant to augment income for individuals living in an area.
Right. It's really not even meant for somebody that's going to be leaving for very long. It's meant for somebody that's living in that house.
Yeah.
Right. And so that's, to me, I have no problems if it is actually beneficial to a resident, like we talked about, age in place was always something we were trying to deal with. I'm not as comfortable as somebody seeing this as a business opportunity and getting multiple properties and then not occupying them.
That's, that's my biggest fear with the whole thing.
So what if we do dial it way back and say it has to be owner occupied and then just leave it at that?
Well, I think.
Without the exceptions of, oh, unless this or that. Maybe military and.
Military and is definitely what I would not want to restrict. I don't want to restrict anyone who wants to go do some sort of ecclesiastical service sort of thing. I think that would be detrimental to the community. I think it's the, it's the squishier ones, like educational pursuits.
The thing that I want us to keep in mind, though, is that this has been being done off the books. For the people who are gonna do it have been doing it, and I want this to be an invitation to come out of the dark, to make this usable, to be reasonable. And, so, I don't want to scale way back in that we're then saying, just keep doing it in the dark. That's what people have been doing already, nobody ever reports them, so it's not really an issue.
Well, we're not gonna get it perfect. I mean, that's one of the things that I've watched at the state levels, whatever you legislate, or whatever program you come up with, somebody figures out a way to game it to their advantage. So you can't anticipate everyone's method on how they're going to use this, and, and which is most beneficial to them and not necessarily beneficial to the city. I think, though, that making it owner occupied is, is kind of the framework we're looking for, and being restrictive on the reasons why we want you to still be here, I don't think that's incompatible with having them come out of the dark. Because if they're doing it now, they're living there now. Right?
My, my leaning in general, and what I'm saying, is to be more open, and then as we see problems, to be mitigated for, make adjustments. And I think we'll be on it enough that it won't get out of control before we make adjustments if needed.
I don't know.
I think we already have some that are out of control.
So I think as staff has mentioned, this is a discretionary provision, and as I see it, you have three ways that you could reduce the impact of this clause. One would be by time, right now it's at three years and one month, you could reduce that, or require them to do back-to-back requests. Uh, the purpose, you could limit the purposes, you said you want to take some out, and then I think it was another suggestion of maybe adding a maximum. So the time they can be gone, the purpose they can be gone, and perhaps, you know, three years every ten years, or, you know, that's problematic for staff to have to monitor, but those seem like three ways you could reduce the impact of that exclusion.
Yeah.
Or exception.
Yeah, I would lean towards leaving it as written, but just adding something as far as, it says a maximum of three years and one month, but, um, it's not clear if that means one time in a lifetime, or, yeah.
I, I think we still need to tighten it up.
I see a lot of difficulties in regulating the owner occupied, because people right now are buying homes and leasing them out on a regular basis. Now granted, they may not have any use in them, but to Councilman Fillmore's point, uh, I think there's probably some that are doing that. And, uh, I like the fifty percent idea, but then on the other hand, I don't, because there's people all the time that are establishing, I deal with it in my profession, establishing trusts that are still living in their homes, and they don't have that, that twenty percent ownership anymore, so.
If they own the trust, don't they own the home until they.
No, it's the trust on.
Not always, and you might have some older person as well, too, that's, that trust has been established for, so. I mean, it, it gets really, I, I could see, see the points that we're going, and maybe we need to tighten up some things, but it's, it's gonna be difficult to dictate on all of them.
So could we do fifty percent for a trust? Or a member of the tor- trust?
Uh, legally, I guess you could use word.
Well, that was my point, why does it matter if I own the property, you know, individually with four other people, or if I created a trust, or an LLC? To me, I, there really isn't a distinction.
I wouldn't want an LLC, because I don't, I'm worried about developers putting those together and putting names on them, but I'm fine with a trust, I'm fine with saying fifty percent, or you're part of a trust that owns at least fifty percent.
Yeah, I, I can see your nightmare scenario, where somebody says, okay, I've got ten people, I'm giving them a small interest, they live in the smallest portion of the, of the house possible, and the rest is ADU, and.
We've got, we've got a little bit of that going on here.
I don't know how, how frequent it's gonna be, though.
Well, there's some already.
We've got a few people here, that, we have a few developers that would be very interested in doing that, that have the money to do it.
Well, I, I think that, um, the owner occupied portion needs to comply with state law. So there, at least as far as the definition is, I, there's actually definitions I'd like better, that you have to live there at least one calendar year to be considered an owner occupant, but that's not the definition of owner occupant under state law. So that they have some skin in the game, as far as that goes.
So if we go with owner, with the owner occupied, what would be your suggestion, George?
I don't have a problem with, um, the fifty percent, but the, the thing is, is that it'd have to be defined as, like, take the trust example, are you a beneficiary of the trust? Are you, are, you know, what is your relationship to the trust? That would have to be determined. I, I don't know how you do that without establishing that. The, the, the smaller number just means to me that it's no, it's a business opportunity. That's, that's what I see at the small.
That's what I see it as, too.
I, I don't know another way to go about that.
So then I would feel fine tightening that up, and then we can always, um, see if we get an application for an amendment, if someone feels like, you know, this is a reasonable use.
True, that's a good idea.
It's a family use, and you're limiting my use inappropriately, and then they can come and ask.
So you feel like the fifty percent offer tonight would be okay?
But right now, when we're not, we're kind of trying to predict the future and what people might need, let's limit it.
And we have to remember, again, we're looking at one or two percent of the, we're not, I think we're panicking, thinking every house in Centerville's gonna, I hope.
Yeah.
Maybe they will.
So, so we can go both ways, we can tighten up in some areas and wait and see if people ask us to loosen it, we can keep it loose in some areas and see if.
Except it's grandfathered in, so if you go ahead and do it, and we change it, you get to keep what you've got.
That's true, but.
So if there's a problem, so I'd rather go too tight and have somebody come and ask me to loosen it, than have three or four get us into trouble, and they get to keep that, and then nobody else gets it.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we're feeling more comfortable with fifty percent, aren't we?
Yeah, I think so.
What do people think about the eight-foot side versus ten-foot side?
So are we saying it has to be the ten-foot side?
It's what it's currently written as.
Right now.
Councilman Rance just asked you to clarify, say that one more time, sorry. Councilor Fimmer, what your question was?
Uh, the, the setback side, the entrance to the ADU being required to be on the ten-foot side easement versus the eight-foot side easement.
Okay, thank you.
Ask him how he feels about it, ask him.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Councilor, Councilman Rance, they're, they're asking for your.
I think, I think I'm proposing that we remove that stipulation, and that it.
I wouldn't be inclined to agree with that, to remove it.
And again, if we find that there are problems and we get complaints, we can tighten it, but. I don't see the two feet making a big difference, I do see that people have already built their homes with a certain floor plan, and if that's where the door makes the most sense, and they want to take advantage of this, then to just limit that one home, because it's already built a certain way, for two feet, that I don't see makes or breaks the situation.
But we could at least go back and give, uh, George the benefit of, if it's an existing home, but if not, then we would, then it would have.
Sure, if you can plan it in advance, and if it's a new home, how does staff feel about that?
Well, I was just trying to read this provision, um, said ground entrances and coverings are prohibited unless the wall facade is at least ten feet from the perimeter lot line, but then there's an additional provision that we would need to know if you want to keep this, and such coverings are located at least six feet from the perimeter. So there's two requirements in that one clause, ten feet plus the coverings at least six feet. So if you eliminate the ten feet, do you still want the six feet? Of the, such coverings are located at least six feet from any perimeter lot line.
Yes.
That addresses Councilmember McKeon's issue as well, of just saying, you can't put the, I mean.
Right up against the. Well, there has to be room for the rainwater to come off the roof of the little patio that you create, right? So, that makes sense to me. So I would say just eliminate the, um, ten versus eight, it's obviously gonna be eight, and just say that there needs to be at least two feet from a lot line on a covering. Cory, do you want to speak to that?
We could.
That was six feet.
We're gonna do existing homes, so. I think, I think.
I don't mind just opening.
Your, your aisle, your, your width of your hallways are three feet, so that's what you're working with.
Say again?
Your width of your aisles and accesses are three feet, so thirty-six inches.
Yeah.
So if you go on to the six-foot side, don't even do a cover, or you go the eight-foot side, and you don't even do the covering, you don't have the six-foot width if a drop-down stairwell. That's what I'm trying to make sure doesn't happen.
Can you say that?
I don't understand what you're saying.
You, you couldn't meet the six foot.
You can't meet the six feet if it's on the side of the house.
So the six feet isn't from the side of the home, it's from the outside of the stairwell.
Now it wouldn't be five, you could say five feet.
Six feet is your emergency access for gurney and personnel. That's why we have six feet separation between.
See, then you have to have an extra three feet after the six feet.
Right.
That's why we have to have the ten.
So does every house have ten on one side and eight on the other?
No, sometimes they split it nine and nine, but they can't go below a minimum of eight.
And.
And so I'm thinking your basement dropping in a stairwell, you're gonna compromise the six foot on that side of the house.
That's true.
That's a better argument for the ten than the one I had, so.
Yep. All right, okay.
But you can change it.
No, I, I don't want to create problems for, uh, emergency responders. I've talked to enough of them who say it's hard to wedge people out of some of the older homes.
So right now we have a change on it, to the fifty percent ownership, and that's what we're gonna touch tonight and deal with, right?
I'd also like, I liked George's idea of pulling back on some of those reasons you can be gone, so that it's not just a business opportunity.
So we have, we have six listed, job relocation, military assignment, medical, or other care, or other care of others, sabbatical leave, educational pursuits, or personal illness. That's what's listed currently.
I think, education pursuits.
I think we can do education.
No, we, that's, that's one of the quick nixes.
Okay, so we've got three, we've got education, okay, you've got your. That's a mission.
How about if we say.
Well, no, that's ecclesiastical.
Here, let me just throw something out. How about if we say.
Sabbatical, so you just don't.
Do we keep the list as it is, but we say for a maximum of two years, with the ability to reapply once in a ten-year period? So, so in ev- out of every decade, the very most that someone could be gone is a total of four years, but the assumption is it's gonna be two years or less.
Hmm, but the military, though, you can't always guarantee that, though. You could go on multiple deployments in a ten-year span, eighteen months to go, yeah.
I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it cut back a little bit. Here again, I don't want people buying the house, living there for their thing, and then taking off and creating a duplex, because they're renting where they moved out of, and they're renting their basement, which is what that's gonna create. So I'm okay with the, I don't have them in front of me.
Ecclesiastical.
Ecclesiastical.
Military.
And the military. Okay, and then the other two was what, educational?
For others.
Educational, what's the other one?
Education, sabbatical, caregiving, medical, for others, and personal illness.
Okay, somebody else's opinion on that, but I'm glad to take off some of those.
I'm not opposed to setting a time.
Yeah, I was.
Number of uses of those as well, but that's too many levers at once for me, I'd rather just do one tonight and then figure out the, the other, as we get somebody who's reapplying. Is the three years too long?
Well, I think we have. For an ADU thing, I, I almost want to say yes, if, okay, so I'm gonna use a hypothetical. Say you've got a family that gets an ecclesiastical assignment, it's a three-year assignment, and they're going to be gone. If they're going to rent out an ADU in their basement, and then leave the top empty, is that what we're thinking? Or are they going to be renting out the top and the bottom as separate things? I, I think that's.
You're gonna be renting out the top and the bottom?
Yeah.
Right, because they should be able to rent out the, it wouldn't need to be an ADU.
It wouldn't need to be an ADU.
You can rent part of your house right now, that's legal.
Right, but imagine, let's be realistic, someone, someone makes a retirement plan, they, they, they built a large home, their children are now gone, and they have more square footage than they use. And so part of their retirement plan was to build an ADU in the basement. They rent it out, they have a wonderful family living there, the family's in the middle of living there, they have no plans of moving, and they get an ecclesiastical call that will last three years.
So those people can still live in the ADU, they just can't rent their upstairs, too, and they could.
But why would they not be able to? And so again, they're just maybe going to do it anyway, and then we put someone in the position, the uncomfortable position, to decide to be able to support their desire to serve eclesiastically financially, and, you know, have someone take care of that space, versus not telling quite the truth, and just doing it anyway. Right, but my point is, is that I think that it's a delicate balance between inviting people to do this legally, and staying really reasonable.
Well, I hope that they wouldn't do that and then go accept an ecclesiastical assignment, you know.
Right, but.
But.
This is what's going on in our community.
I think you're really playing with any of those, is that your risk, I mean, what about somebody that's assigned by the government?
Yeah.
To go run a, be a president of American institution in Lebanon or something, and it's a two or three year, I mean, we shouldn't discriminate against them, just because they're, they're assigned on a job pursuit or an educational pursuit, over, over a military or religious pursuit, when the government's asked them to do that.
So what's the value of owner occupancy? That's what the, that's the crux of the whole thing.
What's the thing? I think the value is high.
The value of owner occupancy, in theory, is better maintenance.
Yep.
They're gonna be concerned about what it looks like, which affects all the neighbors.
And better ADU tenants, because they're going to be concerned about the people who live with them.
Absolutely, and so if the plan is that the limit is the three years and one month, and they plan on coming back and living in the home, it's the three years and one month that takes care of it, in my opinion. I could be persuaded, though.
I could be persuaded either way on that.
So, I say for now, we leave it, and then we, you know, consider if we want to be more clear about if that's three years and one month for, in forever, right?
So you, right now, you want to just do three years and one month forever? And then see if we need, so do you have any other?
Well, it's not clear that it's three years and one month in forever.
Right, but we need to tell them that, I mean, we need to put that in there right now, and then.
No, it's, it's in there.
Staff, do you feel that this clearly says, when it says maximum, that there wouldn't be an opportunity for another?
No, it's not, clearly.
It's not clear, right?
They could come in the next day and apply for another one.
We'd need to put.
But that was discussed by the planning commission.
We could put a one-time exemption of three years and one month. Are there, is there anything else you feel strongly about, George? You've got a bad face down there.
I, I, I'm placing a ton of value on the owner occupancy idea. And so, as much as we can encourage the owner occupant to be there, that's great. There are extenuating circumstances we've talked about. I'm not comfortable with the whole list, I think we should, we should narrow it down. And, um, as to whether or not they comply or don't comply, as you've said, Tammy, people are doing it right now anyway, so this may be academic, and they're not gonna report how much they're making in income, and whatever else, you know, there's, it's not really for us to be overly concerned, but what I am looking for is, I am looking to make sure that if there is someone disadvantaged by an ADU in their neighborhood, that they've got some rights, too, because enforcement isn't gonna come from Cory driving around and counting parking stalls, it's gonna be a neighbor calling up and saying, there are twenty cars out here, the person who, who supposedly lives here left four years ago.
Right.
And I don't know who's living upstairs, and I don't know who's living downstairs. That's what the complaint's gonna be.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Agreed. So then my last question is the termination section. And I think that, I don't know, um, if I were interested in having that changed, for the reasons I stated earlier, staff, do you have any recommendations as to what that might look like?
I think Cory said that that was an easy fix. I, I would support you on that one.
Okay, so remind me what we talked about and what you said. That was many issues.
I don't have a COVID brain, and I can't tell you. He, Cory, about taking out the second kitchen, that we're not gonna, we're gonna do away with that in a different ordinance, so you can.
Well, we do have a provision here that says, look, the planning commission brought this up, what if I have a second kitchen? And we said, oh, that's a really good point, because we put, we record something against the property for second kitchens, so we said.
We're saying we're gonna do away with.
You have a second kitchen, and it's recorded against the property, as part of your application for approval of ADU, you're going to have to terminate that.
But we're saying, we're gonna do away with that. Help us, Cory, help us, come on.
Because the reason we are concerned.
You had the good answers.
No, but I agree with Cory, you, they, if they, they now have two dwellings, if you do away with the termination of ADU, they have two dwellings in one home, so they have to, we can add a sentence that says you must reapply for a second kitchen, or otherwise bring the home into compliance with city code.
But you can have, as long, why does anybody care if you have two kitchens in your house?
It's not kitchen, it's a kitchen and bath. That's a dwelling.
Okay, but why does anybody care about that?
Because now you have two dwellings.
Right, but the ADU ordinance dictated by the state.
But the ADU ordinance, we were trying to do away with not being able to have ADUs. Now that's not a problem, so if you want two dwellings, fine, and if you don't.
So I got to compromise. I'm going to tie the two paragraphs together.
Okay, go for it.
And this is, this is actually, I'd like, I'd like to see how this flies. So in street addressing, it says that you, you can add a, like a unit number, A or B, right? What if that's the item that has to be removed when your ADU is gone? That you, that you have to have an A or a B, that's required. If you are getting an ADU, you have to have A or B, and then when you are no longer having an ADU, you lose that additional, that additional addressing. And the reason I think the, the addressing is important, and this is where it ties to the second kitchen, it all comes back around, if you have a fire and they call 911, where do they go? A or B? If you're having a medical emergency, A or B? I, I, I think it would be, you take some of these larger homes, if you're knocking on the door and nobody's answering, but there's a 911, well, I guess you can assume they're downstairs and run around, but you're losing time. So I think if we are going to allow ADUs, they need to be addressed so that, that we have the ability for that to be registered with the city, we know it's there, and when they're done, you remove, you remove the address.
Okay, so then do you want to do away with the second kitchen problem, ordinance that we have now?
I, I.
I don't see a purpose in this.
Well, see, this is where I got to see, I got to watch Cory's temperature on whether he thinks that an A or a B is a significant feature to be removed that would qualify and make him happy.
I think it's a significant issue of addressing, and it's the idea of that, you know, we're just trying to get to the home in the case of emergency, and if it's a B or an A, rather than create a separate address. So I think the answer is partly yes, I agree, but I still think it steps back to how we define a dwelling, and so the issue, the dwelling is defined as this, bath, living, and kitchen facilities, that constitutes a dwelling. And so the second kitchen kit gets in, because the basement with a second kitchen in a single-family home is going to have a bath, living, and kitchen, and most people get out of that by not doing a kitchen. That's, ninety-nine percent of the time, you go to any of these large guest houses, they won't have a kitchen into them when we inspected and finalized it.
Of course not. So what's the legal definition of a kitchen?
It is fixed cooking facilities, so that's your range.
So if I have a removable cooktop, is that a fixed?
That is not, and it says explicitly in the definition, cooktops, microwaves, don't count as a fixed kitchen.
So as long as they don't have an oven, they're not a kitchen.
Right. That's how they get out of it. You know, the, the issue that comes back into is, yes, we could do the second kitchen, we could solve that. The issue is long-term. You build it, they terminate the ADU by their voluntary, they no use anymore. They sell it, somebody comes in, all the facilities are available to you, nobody ever told me. I can't do this.
Well, they can do it, they just need a.
They're trying to create a loophole, this is it. I'm going to do an ADU for one year, I'm going to terminate it, and now I have two dwellings. I mean, they would be violating things, but.
But why would they do that? What would be the purpose in that? They're not getting anything, I mean, that makes no sense.
Value, value.
I mean, in terms of staff, we are just trying to help you enforce the ordinances, and this was a significant concern in the legislation by the Utah League of Cities and Towns, which is, how are cities going to enforce once these are violated? And that's how we got in, the owner occupancy and the lien provision, because once you have two people living in a home, it is very hard for a city, we, we have no enforcement tool at that point. Knowing it's a violation, we, we just, we don't, and so that was the, the compromise with the legislation was, fine, if you're going to require this, we should at least have some enforcement tools.
Why then, help me understand, why if someone took advantage of this and did it legally and filed for an ADU permit, and then they lost their renters and they didn't want to bother getting new renters, why would they ever come in and terminate that, then, if it's going to require a costly change in their home?
So you're saying they, they may just want to wait a year?
Just let it expire, don't come back in.
Or just leave their home as it is forever, but never come in and say, we're not using it this way anymore, because that's just another expensive loophole to jump through that the city's.
I mean, we don't allow it when you first construct your home, but it's a, it's a policy decision for you. But if I'm just building a home, I have to get approval for a second kitchen, and it's recorded against the property.
Okay, so let me give you a scenario. Somebody comes in, we don't, we just get away from the occupancy, or they do it for a year, whatever they do. Once I have two dwellings into there, it's going to be assessed as two dwellings. I get constant calls, is this mother-in-law apartment legal? Well, what do you mean by mother? Well, my mother wants to move into this unit. You have a second kitchen ladder downstairs, you're good to go, mom can live there. Now we've changed the state definition. Now I can have two families live there, and I have a long-term call, the value goes up, the person buys it, don't know that they have this situation, and they come in and they start renting it out. The investment guy comes in, I got two dwelling units here, it's a duplex, I start renting it out, you know? I don't have anything other than, hey, way back when, this is what you did.
But, but under the legal definition of a kitchen, if I pull the oven out, and then I put it right back in after, you know, you've, you've done your inspection, the kitchen is now decommissioned.
It's, it's just.
The same thing.
It's just the government check on the ADU gives you that challenge when anything else comes in inheritance. No, they don't have an ADU permit. It expired three years ago. It's not an ADU.
Yeah, but when I sell the house and I say, yeah, it's got a second kitchen, go apply for an ADU, because I put the stove back in, I'm reaping the rewards as the homeowner, because I have that second kitchen, I didn't devalue my property, there doesn't seem to be any enforcement tool for you to stop me from doing that.
Right, but it's, it's, it, it's on the weaker end, I'm not going to try to argue that, but the idea is that a person has testimony that they did this, and they're transferring this over to the individual, and we've got something that says this is the agreement between the city. Will they, will they do it? Will they terminate it? I don't know whether they'll do that, but we have the enforcement power to use that agreement to say, terminate this second unit.
So I think the council's bringing up good questions that staff is not adequately answering, but this might be one of those compromises to leave it in the ordinance, because this is a year away. If, you know, somebody can apply, because again, I'm worried about the non-conforming, if we don't put it in now, we can't, we're going to miss it for those that get a permit now, so why don't we leave it in, but we can come back and promise to come back in the next two months to analyze this more thoroughly.
Yeah, I just really want to understand what purpose it would serve, and alternatively, why wouldn't the owner just keep it in perpetuity?
That's true, and that's a good point. That, that has me thinking, okay, that's, that's a reasonable point, but also I can't get my mind around, now you have two dwellings, and you're, you're not, you're, you're in violation of city code.
And I want to understand your argument and thinking better, so yeah, let's.
Yeah, and that's where I'm at. You've got two defined dwellings, now what do I do?
So can we adopt this with the fifty percent?
Are we, are we done with all the?
One more thing, though.
No.
We, we've got the, taking it to all of the zoning, rather than.
So, yeah, I think, my question is, why would we not want this in medium?
Agreed, yeah.
I think that's a given.
Not all. I would be worried about the, okay, I've seen this.
But the single-family.
In, in high density where they're renting a closet, this has happened, you know?
No, in the single-family.
In all the zones. Yeah, I heard all zones, I was like, no, 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 no.
No, a single-family home in all zones. So you could be in a medium, or you can be in a high, but it has to be a single-family home on a lot bigger than six thousand square feet.
But all residential zones?
No.
No.
And all zones.
Any zone.
Single-family.
If there's an existing single-family home, then, and it's in, and it's in a, a, a zone that's denser than residential low, why would we be worried about increasing the density in that area by one unit in a single-family home? So.
Well, well, I don't know. Okay, now you have me thinking. What about like the hive, and what about?
They don't know.
Are they a single-family home on six thousand square feet?
They are, but they don't have six thousand square feet at the hive.
At any of them, even the eighteen?
Cory?
I'm just going to say staff can't respond to that fully. I mean, I don't know the impact of putting it all over.
Which, I did a Cursage check, I think a lot of your developments that are single-family, like in the RH, so the hive, it's not going to be on a six thousand.
Yeah.
And, and our mediums, so.
Our mediums, most of them the same, so like the Brighton, that's in a medium zone, they're not, they're not six thousand square.
Okay, so, yeah.
But I do.
I'm always worried about the traffic.
Yeah, I do, I do have the concern when you say all zones, because that broadens it to RH zone.
Okay, well, all residential, all residential zones.
That's where you can start taking advantage of the density.
All residential zones.
That's RH.
No, the others, but the other, it's got to be a single-family home in the six thousand square feet.
Right, but you take right behind Dave Bell's with the CW Hive, and they have twelve units, and those are likely six thousand square feet, so now you just did twenty-four.
Right.
So are you just saying, single-family and medium density? What are you suggesting?
Well, I suggested our rest, single-family only zones, I think that's substantial.
Ah, well, that was a bad idea. Let's move on.
But the RM is one where I said, not a significant consequence.
Okay, we'll go RM and single-family homes, that's how.
So are, are, low?
AL and medium, residential.
Low and medium.
Yes.
Still six thousand square feet.
Still six thousand.
Yep. Now who's going to make this here?
Did somebody say AL? Did I hear AL in that?
The ordinance currently allows any single-family home in AL and RL.
That's okay, AL is agricultural, it's just a big farm.
Residential zone is where we have to allow.
We don't have any big farms left, we divided them all up and sold them.
They've got parking, as Tammy was saying.
So you're just adding residential.
Yeah, plenty of residential parking.
So have you made lists on these two or, two or three amendments?
Okay, so who's going to put this here amendment together?
So far, we're only at fifty percent on the ownership, and adding RM to the zone, we're going to hold off on addressing the temporary owner absence. Are we holding off on the ground entrance, because we were persuaded by the requirement for the public safety access, and we're going to leave the termination.
For now.
As well, for now. So, so there's three things we'll come back to, and then.
So moved. I agree. I think we were very thorough.
Besides, I don't have anything else on our agenda tonight.
Well, I do want to definitely put, add to that list to come back on, is, is that the owner residence requirement that we're, that we're compliant with state law. So we, we need to understand that. I think we, even though it references something that's in state law, I think it should be in here, saying, if you were an owner occupant, you have to be this, this, and this to be.
We were going to add that, that, no more, it already has the three years and one month, right?
Yes.
Well, we're talking about the temporary absence provision.
Right, but we're going to do three years, one month, only one time until we relook at that, because otherwise, we've given somebody permission to do that a hundred times, so we want that added in.
No, it is written that way, we're just, well.
Well, no, it's.
No, it isn't, it isn't one time, it's.
We could add comma one time.
Right.
Yeah, up to a maximum of three years and one month, no renewals of waiver. That, that meets your legislative intent you're asking for until we come back on it.
Okay.
Sure.
So Stephanie, did you make a motion?
So I make a motion that we adopt this ordinance based on those four provisions. I think it's the fifty percent owner occup, owner of the property, owner occupied, the.
Adding the RM.
Adding the RM to the zoning, that it's a one-time granting of it, and what was the last one? There were four.
The setback.
Only three?
You were leaving it at ten.
Oh, we were leaving the setback.
Leaving the setback.
Okay, so that's my motion.
And I would add, I would ask you.
And that it's going to come back to us in the next couple of months, so we can address that other murkiness.
All right, you got a second on that?
Second. Give it to Bill.
Okay, Bill has the second.
Corby was here.
All right, let's vote, starting at the end. Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So that passes five, five to zero. Thank you. Good vigorous discussion. Cory, you're still with us, you're still awake, you ready to move on to?
Number two.
Number two, another public hearing about fences.
Number two of fourteen, we've watched you here all night.
Yeah, just real quick, thanks for the debate. Welcome to the state not knowing what happens down in local jurisdictions when they pass a legislation.
This is awful.
Very, very often.
Threw you a softball, and you didn't take it the first time.
Yeah, just trying to dance that dance between supporting the state law and my frustration sometimes when it gets passed. This one is the fence, so if you recall, we're doing a zone code text change, if you want to call it, to the fencing requirements for corner lots specifically. It, we currently prohibit fencing on both street-facing sides of the lot. This one changes it so it's a side-facing street of the twenty-foot, can bring the fence out towards the sidewalk, run it parallel with the sidewalk to and up to the front setback on the other street, and then they can return it back towards the house, so it'll expand a side yard area of most of the homes unless for some reason you put your door on the side yard area, but you, you directed the planning commission and, and staff to look at it. We took it back to the planning commission, they had very little different concerns about it, so it came to you pretty much as you directed. There are this refining of the, the visual site triangle, one of the, we put a illustration to it, and so this is the idea that as you go down the side yard towards the interior lot from a corner, you may run into a driveway of the other lot. We have a site triangle of twelve feet. I noticed that the illustration in your ordinance, the cutting and pasting of the graphic missed the twelve-foot site triangle, says ten. That was using the graphic and covering up the graphic to twelve, so we just, their recommendation is twelve, not ten, to match our driveway site triangle. But other than that, the planning commission voted not unanimously, there was five members there, it passed four to one, as a recommendation to you.
Thank you. Questions?
I can't remember, Cory. How close to the sidewalk?
Right to the property line.
Right to the property line.
Which, that, that varies, because if you go to the, to the interior old town lots, sometimes our right-of-way is much deeper, but typically, you're going to be looking anywhere from six inches to a foot behind the sidewalk.
You wouldn't want a little spot between the sidewalk and the grass, that's just going to have to be up kept.
If you don't have a sidewalk, it's going to be some space, it would look like a park strip, but you're probably six inches to a foot behind the standard sidewalk. So you bring the fence up to, now, we all know what people do practically, they dig the pulse hole right there against the sidewalk, but it allows you to go to the property line.
Any further questions? All right, let's go to the public hearing portion. This is a public hearing on the zoning code amendment related to fences. Those that are online, it should be on your screen, the, the number. Those that are in person, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, just state your name and where you're from. The public hearing is now open related to the zoning code amendment with regards to fences. Seeing anybody? Okay, I think we've got enough time. We will, we will close the public hearing on regarded to the zoning code amendment on fences. Is there any further discussion before I entertain a motion?
I have a question for Cory.
Okay, Cory?
It was Commissioner Hayman who was in opposition. Can you, you know, give us the cliff nose version of the opposition?
Been a little bit. I think we had some discussion around including building setbacks on that corner lot issue and that competing interest that's associated with. They can fence in now to the corner lot, to the sidewalk, but currently, if you put a tough shed, once the fence is up, people may want to put this tough shed in the corner on the street. It doesn't change that setback, this ordinance would still push the tough shed twenty feet away.
Yeah, and I can't speak to Commissioner Hayman's thinking, but this one's a really tough tension for me, because I do understand the reasoning behind making the change, but aesthetically, for the city as a whole, I have concerns. So, for example, imagine 400 West, right, where we have all of those cul-de-sacs, and you have an aesthetic on 400 West where, you know, most of the homes are facing the street, then you have all these cul-de-sacs, and so you just have front yard, beautiful front yard, beautiful front yard, beautiful front yard, and then all of a sudden, a really stark fence right up to the sidewalk, and it just visually doesn't make sense and breaks up the street aesthetic that, that we have going on. So, you know, I can't crawl into Commissioner Hayman's mind, but that's one of my hesitations and concerns, and we have 400 West, as an example, a potential for that, you know, pretty starkly changing the feel of an entire area of the city, so I lean towards no on this one, actually, for that reason.
Any further comments?
Well, living on a corner, I'll tell you that the fishbowl effect is real.
Well, living on a corner, I'll tell you that, uh, the fishbowl effect is real. And, uh, I appreciate the idea of being able to fence off the yard.
I live on a corner.
It's, it's difficult to put, it's difficult, I think it's difficult to leave a park strip or something between the sidewalk and the fence. And it's difficult to try to upkeep. If you put the fence all the way to the thing, it's, it's just tricky, regardless of where you put it. But I can see the need for a, a fence there.
I think the height of the fence being four feet isn't too restrictive, and it's not like an eight-foot fence, but.
It's six. It's six.
Shall not exceed four feet for a minimum distance of 12 feet when the driveway is adjacent. So you've got a section that's four feet, right?
Um, to the driveway.
Right, so.
Good.
As to the fishbowl effect, it's not gonna, it's not gonna 100% get rid of that, because you still have low sections in your fence. So, I don't know. I, this is one where fences are great, but, you know, there are concerns that I have with adding additional fencing. But I, I could be persuaded either way on this one, because, just because it becomes legal doesn't mean I'm gonna go put a fence around my corner lot.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. People have the right, hopefully, to, you know, look around and see what it's gonna be. This is one I feel like property owners probably have the right to have the fence if that's what they choose to do, but.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we deny the recommendation.
Um, it's an actual, is it an actual ordinance?
Recommendation to accept the ordinance.
Okay.
2021-19.
All right, so, okay, that's valid, valid motion. The second to that motion? That motion fails. And do we have another motion?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 2021-19.
I'll second that.
So, uh, motion is second. Further discussion?
Just a clarifika, clarification is, uh, staff noted that there needs to be a correction to the attached figure 1.1.
Making it a 12-foot site triangle. Okay, so noted. With the, with the attached 12-foot site triangle amended in the illustration.
So that's a, a, a.
I'll add that to my.
Do I have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, further discussion? Uh, good. Vote, Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
You're gonna vote aye?
Aye.
That motion passes, uh, four to one. All right, uh, let's go to item number three.
Mayor, can I just interject and try one thing real quick with the owl? Uh, we have those listening YouTube, and I just wanna kind of explain. We, we do have a pretty good system for Zoom. Unfortunately, our, our Zoom is not connecting with our cameras, so we can't. We're having a tough time getting Zoom and YouTube together, and that's why we had an echo at first. We do have technicians coming next week to fix this, but I do wanna see if, those that are listening on YouTube, if they can tell me if they're getting an echo. Jennifer, just text now. Because Bill's best way, Councilman Rince's best way to communicate with us is Zoom. But I had to shut off this mic because of an echo on YouTube.
Turn this back on, and then.
Try and get on YouTube and see if it's, it's an echo.
Well, will you, would you go stand up there and talk to her 30 seconds?
It should be any of these microphones.
But we've done a lot of talking, so you get to use them.
Yeah, I have that, yeah. Actually, I hear myself. Is there an echo on YouTube?
I sent our viewers a message, but haven't.
All right. So hopefully, because this is the best way for Councilmember Ins. Again, the priority is to make sure Councilmember Ins is a part of this meeting. YouTube is, in addition to, it's not required for YouTube to be available, but we're trying to accommodate both. Because we know how important YouTube is, and we do have a number of listeners, watchers, so. I just wanna make sure Councilmember Rince is also taken care of. I think it's working okay with the phone. There is a little bit of an echo. I'm wondering if that has something to do with the proximity question, you know? But. Okay, all right.
Good try.
Good try.
Moving on. Thank you very much.
But thank you. Uh, since we came back, uh, in person in May, uh, the staff had worked hard to have. It was, it has been working really well. Just a little problem tonight. Yeah, it, it was fantastic for those who joined in from the outside. So, get it fixed next week, it sounds like, or later this week. All right, this is item number three. This is a request for deferral of public improvements. Um, uh, we have, uh, stat, Mike, were you gonna talk about this? Is our staff representative, Mike Carlson, for our public works, uh, our public works director?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As far as the staff, we reviewed this, and we've come to the conclusion that we always feel like it's important to have the, uh, infrastructure put in as we go along. Uh, we feel it's important to keep moving forward. A couple of issues that, uh, and I won't be laboring for very long with it, a couple of issues that I thought if you, I don't know if we can pull up the historical map. There's two areas where, when you come into the historical area that doesn't have any sidewalk. One of them is Center Street, one of them is Third North. If you go drive around the whole perimeter, everybody has a chance to come off of Fourth West, or excuse me, Fourth East, or off of Main Street and at least have a block to get inside of the, uh, into the zone, basically. And, and looking at that, I feel like that's a pretty safe way to go. Uh, they'll still have to put in a drive approach, which will have to have a sidewalk in the width of the drive approach. So they will still have some sidewalk, but it will be in the drive approach that they'd have to meet. So a rough estimate I come up with is approximately about 56 feet of sidewalk would have to be put in. There is an initial hurdle to the west side as a retaining wall that approaches, approaches out into, uh, our easement, our right-of-way. And so that would help to be able to remove that and be able to finish that out. I only have one other concern with that would be the water drainage. So the retaining wall is made to, you know, drain the water out towards the street. So we may have to work with, uh, our engineer and, and see if we can take care of that if you guys decide that you wanna deny the deferral. So, that's a short scenario. There is a drying. I think you've had a chance to look at it. I don't know if we need to go through it much more. It's not my intent to create hardship on anybody or anything, but it is a recommendation. I feel that a safety sake, that helps get people off of the road, the busy road and down into the interstate, there into the area. So, any questions for me? Kind of short and sweet, after a long couple of topics. Okay, I'll leave it to you guys.
Vote. The council, do you need further information on this? Yeah, it's your, Montoya's here? Oh, come on up. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm gonna speak for me and my husband Dustin. That's okay? Um, thank you for taking the time to meet with us in regards to this issue. I talk really fast, so I'll try to, try to slow it down. Uh, my name is Carrie Montoya. My husband is Dustin Montoya. We inherited this property. Sorry. When my father passed away in 2019, I said I wasn't gonna cry. The property has actually belonged to our family since the, uh, late 1800s. My father's family, um, had an orchard on the property, and they built the house in 1902. Um, I actually still have the original deed and the loan book from they took out from the bank, which I plan on framing and putting in our house. Um, unfortunately, I was not able to grow up in this home or know my father until 15 years ago. Once I met him, we fell in love with Centerville. We loved coming up here. We loved being part of the community. Um, it was always his plan for us to demo his house and build our dream home on it, so we can continue to keep it in the family and pass it down to our children. Um, he was actually approached numerous times about making his house historic. He denied it because he wanted us to demo it and update the property and update the home. We have, it's taken us so long to clean out the home because it, many generations of stuff built up into the home. It took us over two years to clean it out. Um, it has been cleaned out. It has been demoed. And we're, we're excited to move forward with this process and become Centerville residents. Um, we've been asked to put a sidewalk down the side of the property from 400 East heading west down Center Street. We're asking for an exemption for the following reasons. Um, one, we don't wanna be the first residents on the street to have a sidewalk. Um, our properly, property actually sits higher than our Western neighbors, and there is a retaining wall, um, that separates the two of us. It is actually a substantial difference. Um, my kids love jumping over the wall. So to, to change that, it would be a huge burden financially on us to do that. This is the historic Centerville, and as you're aware, most of the properties in this neighborhood do not have sidewalks. Public Works Director Mike Carlson stated that most of the streets have sidewalks. However, if you actually look at the map, from Porter Lane to 100 North and 400 East to Main Street, there are 231 houses, not including businesses, churches, or schools. Of those houses, 38 are facing a main road, 400 East Parish Lane or Main Street, um, and they do have sidewalks. There are an additional 34 houses in the neighborhood that have sidewalks. That leaves 159 houses without a sidewalk in this area. Seven houses in this area have already been granted an exemption and have been grandfathered in to not have it, to not have a sidewalk in their, um, in their property. So in reality, only 31% of the houses in this neighborhood have a sidewalk. Um, also, the Public Works Director and staff state that there are only two streets that have no sidewalks installed on either side of the road. All the other streets have at least one side of the street with a sidewalk for pedestrians to walk down. Once again, if you look at the map, um, of the sidewalks in this area, this is also not true. Yes, there are sidewalks sporadically throughout the neighborhood, but there is not a constant sidewalk all the way down any of the streets, except on Main Street, 400 East, and Parish Lane. Most of the other sidewalks are some on one side, some on the other, here or there sporadically, making pedestrians having to cross the road multiple times in order to stay on a sidewalk. Any pedestrian walking down the street and being expected to cross the street each time, um, to get to another sidewalk is actually putting that pedestrian in more danger for having to cross that street and being hit by a car. The pedestrian is actually safer staying on the side of the road, whether there is a sidewalk, sidewalk installed or not. Also, the majority of the sidewalks are around churches, schools, and businesses. Um, I'll give you an example. If you zoom in on 300 South, if you take the street heading west from 400 East, you can walk on the sidewalk for about a couple houses, um, and then there's no sidewalk again, um, for four houses. Then there's a sidewalk, four houses down on the north side, for about one block, and then again, there's no sidewalk. And then again, there's a sidewalk at the end. So the pedestrians will have to jump back and forth, um, to, to stay on a sidewalk if, um, for pedestrian safety. Um, we actually polled our community. Um, we went door to door, asked our neighbors in the community, and also, also used the Centerville Community, um, Facebook page. Asked them, how would you feel about leaving, uh, having us putting in the sidewalk? Um, the majority of the people said they didn't care if there was a sidewalk there or not. We then polled them again and asked them, would you leave the street to walk on our sidewalk to get back into the street again? Um, of those that we polled, 90, we got 98 responses. 86% or 86 of them said they would stay in the street. They would not use our sidewalk. Um, 12% said yes, they would use the sidewalk. We then did, further did research. We had Melissa Ellis, who is a Centerville resident and a neighbor, who has a sidewalk in her property, but not in her neighbors. And we had her watch, um, her streets from August 11th to September 6th and tally how many people used the sidewalk and how many did not. 73 people walked down that street. Of those people, not one of them entered the sidewalk to walk on it. We understand that sidewalks are there for pedestrian safety. We also understand they're there for disabilities, et cetera. But when you're having a, a disability person hop over a curb to get onto a sidewalk to hawk back down, they're not gonna use the sidewalks. The other thing to consider is this is historic Centerville. There are 12 historic sites down Center Street. Most of those houses will not be improving their sites anytime soon, where they would be required to put in a sidewalk. So unless the City Council makes a decision to have everyone put in a sidewalk, unfortunately, this street will continue to have sporadic sidewalks, making pedestrians choose to either walk in the street or cross the street to use a sidewalk. And as you can see from our observation, no one actually pops up on that sidewalk. So in conclusion, we ask that you grant us this exemption to not put in a sidewalk at this time. We ask that when the council decides to have all residents in the historic district add sidewalks to their property, then at that time, we will be more than happy to include it in adding a sidewalk along with our neighbors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carrie, and thanks for being well-prepared. I appreciate you being here.
Very well-prepared.
All right, you've, uh, heard both sides' discussion.
Well, since I was involved in the creation of the historic district, let me tell you that, uh, the sentiment of trying to maintain the feel of the historic district, uh, sidewalks are not a part of the, of the feel of the historic district. It just isn't. And I, I come at this from a, a bias in your favor, and that is that I live on a corner and I have the misfortune of having sidewalk on two sides. And, uh, I would not wish the snow removal on anyone. So I, I will vote in favor of the exemption.
But conversely, you've got sidewalks in the historic district right now. A comment was made, well, when everyone does it, we'll be happy to do it, but of course, it doesn't work that way. It comes on a deferral basis when it, when they're doing another property improvement. So we can't control when the other people come for that. But if we're looking at, uh, as Tammy likes to call them, walkable communities, then we have to, we have to accept the fact that that's an improvement that is desirable for the residents, even if it isn't 100% and it is a patchwork.
I think we have talked about, Corey, as it, as the Landmark Committee, at some point in time, I heard, where there was a group looking into not having sidewalks in the historic district. Was that not looked at at some point in time? I'm trying to not whistle at you anymore.
You're correct. It did come up in a subject matter with the historic, uh, the Landmarks Commission to talk about the historic district. And there's certainly a movement of several residents inside that district that like the, the district without the sidewalk. When we talked about this with the DRC, um, you know, the, the first position is, is that infrastructure is always installed, one development at a time, one change at a time. You don't do that, you don't get the infrastructure, uh, in place. Uh, the other element is what Public Works Director indicated. Uh, this is a corner lot off of a main street. The idea for the staff is that somebody can get off that busy street into the neighborhood before they have to hop out into the street. And that was a concern, you know, for us. We recognize the back and forth off the curb is not ideal. But getting off of the street for someone in a safe place before they have to enter into the street on those corners was a good safety concern. And then the third issue that came with the DRC, when, and Mike's giving the support of it, is, we have not made that decision to eliminate sidewalks in the city. So staff has to recommend that infrastructure get installed one at a time. Whether you want to delay that improvement agreement, we understand. Um, but that decision of, of not having sidewalk, evaluating the safety of it. Are we ready for the liability of not providing sidewalks into the community? What's the safe route to schools within that community? Is that where we're gonna place the sidewalk? Those decisions have not been made, so we're just simply looking at it. Today's infrastructure is to be put in by ordinance, one development at a time, and so our recommendation is to put it in.
And the deferrals that we've granted in the past have been in areas that were basically not well-trafficked, right? They were, they were like on hillsides where there wasn't.
No, I mean, you can see here in the historic district map that we have numerous extension agreements. So my challenge here is that if it were more in the core area, it would be a no-brainer. But, um, because to her point of pulling the neighbors, like, if you're just already walking the street, you're gonna stay in the street. The only hesitation that I have is because this is directly off 400 East. And so you have many more cars that need the width of the street. For instance, if they're turning right onto 400, and so they're gonna be going and using the very edge of the street. And so, and you've got cars coming at a higher speed and then turning on. And so for me, it's a, it's a safety issue. And so in this one particular situation, normally I would say, in this historic area, I feel fine with accumulating deferrals until we see a whole block of deferred properties. And then we can say, now it makes sense to require it, because someone can walk that entire block on the sidewalk. But in this situation where it's right on 400 East, I would probably lean towards requiring it to be done.
Well, now you've created another staff question for Corey. Do we have an entire block that's in a deferral status? Or Mike, whoever?
Well, we can see on the map here where the deferrals are.
No, we've had our GIS, Mike Smith, put these deferral agreements on our map so that we could see. And these are also available to the public on our interactive.
It's very helpful.
Yeah, it's been great, so we can look at them every, anytime a property comes in, because we do want to connect those eventually. But, um, this is the map of the area, so no, we don't, I mean. don't, I mean, I guess if you're, if the question is anywhere in the city, so I've got the map up, you know, you just have to pull up our zoning map. We do have a lot on 100 South. We have a lot on 200 South that kind of connect, but not in this immediate area. They're not connecting, but you can see there are a number of agreements in the area.
Right, right.
And traffic-wise, those streets are so different than the corner of 400 and Chase.
Well, this isn't, this is center.
Hmm?
You said Chase.
I mean Chase, I'm sorry.
Bill, have you got any comments?
Well, I'm still thinking about it. I'm inclined to probably do grant the deferral, but against mine.
I don't know. I think the safety argument's pretty compelling, though, because 400 East is a, is a high-speed street, whether we want it to be or not.
I agree with that. The only, only thing is, there has never been a sidewalk there, and I don't think there's ever been anybody hit there. So that, I was like you. I thought, oh, this is dangerous. Like, once I read the packet, I thought, we definitely need it here. But then I thought, since I've walked those roads a lot, I've never seen anybody. So I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's unfortunate for me because I want to grant it, but with the turning of a corner off of a busy street, I feel that it, it does create a vulnerability for pedestrians. And so for a safety reason, that's where I stand on this one.
But there aren't very many pedestrians there. Let me just point that out. And I know this is totally, it's late and I haven't had a lot of sleep. I should keep my mouth shut. My mother grew up in a place with much more traffic than this section has, and there aren't any sidewalks there. And they don't have crashes between pedestrians and cars because there's no expectation on either side that someone else is taking care of their safety. And so the children walk right along the edge of the street, and so do the adults, and the cars watch for the pedestrians, the pedestrians watch for the cars, and there's no expectation of someone else being responsible. And they don't have the problems, the conflicts that we have in ours, where, like we had on the first day of school, we had an unfortunate incident. I think where this has historically not had a sidewalk, I, I don't think that we're creating any additional hazard by not putting in a sidewalk now. People already are conditioned that there's not a sidewalk there.
But we're doing new development, so I'm not sure that the historical argument applies, right? That's, that's what the whole deferral process lends us to, is where it's new development. Is there, is there benefit in keeping it, and this goes back to that, you know, original comment that was made, was about no sidewalks in the historic district? Is that, are we heading that direction to set that as an eventual policy? Because I want to make sure that this one, if it passes, is part of a grander strategy that gets readdressed at some point. I just don't want to do this one in isolation and then it's the part of something else.
I could support no sidewalks in the historic district.
The sizes of the properties and the placement of the houses doesn't lend itself to sidewalks the way...
And I'm like you. I'm still not sure how I could, how I'm going to vote, but I will throw out, and the chief might disagree or agree with me. I don't know. Sometimes he just doesn't see my side of things. But those children that were hit on their way to school probably wouldn't have been hit if they not been on the sidewalk. If they'd have been on the road, the car would have seen them. They wouldn't have shot off the sidewalk in front of the car. Is that a little bit of the truth, Chief?
That's the what-if game.
That's speculation.
It is, but I'm just saying that's what caused the accident, was these kids came down the sidewalk and didn't stop.
Yeah, they were riding a bike at high speed along the sidewalk, and so they suddenly hit intersection.
But, so as being down there on Main Street, which doesn't really have anything to do with anything, but I have almost been hit by bicyclists on the sidewalk because I don't look before I step onto the sidewalk, but I look before I step onto the road. That has nothing to do with where theirs are. I'll be quiet. I don't know what I'm thinking.
We haven't had much sleep at this end, so just, so yeah.
Well, it sounds like you have enough votes to make it pass. So this is going to sound weird, but I'm going to motion that we grant the request for the deferral.
Lisa has a comment, and I'd love to hear it. Sorry. I was trying to jump in.
I, I was deliberately ignoring you.
I just wanted, I did hear that the motion may be to approve, but since the Public Works Director and staff were not recommending approval, we did not bring the actual agreement to you. So the motion, we'll need to bring the agreement back to you. So if you, the motion could just be to direct staff to prepare a deferral agreement and bring it back as soon as possible. And then we will. So we don't have an agreement for you to take action on today.
Fair enough.
It sounds like Bill is favorable either way, so...
Right. I was just going to, it's basically calling the question. So, okay. The motion that Lisa suggested, that we will instruct staff to bring back a deferral agreement.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Further discussion? Councilman Enz?
Aye.
Councilman McEwen?
Nay.
Councilwoman Fillmore?
Nay.
Councilwoman Ivy?
Aye.
The motion passes three to two. All righty. Let's go to item number four.
So just clarification for the applicant.
Yes.
The council is just directing staff to bring an agreement that they will consider next time. So we'll, we'll try to get that on as soon as possible. And if you have any questions, you can call me or the Public Works Director.
And for staff, Corey or Lisa, how does this situation tie to the fence ordinance that we just passed? So on these properties that don't have sidewalks, to what point are they allowed to build their fence? So this is a corner lot, and if they face their front door on 400 East, then this is a side yard.
Yeah, they still will have to abide, the fence goes to the property line wherever that lands. And so there probably is likely some space between where the fence and the curb is. And so that will be, need to be maintained like a park strip because it'll be absent of a sidewalk since you grabbed it.
And that would probably be the 4 feet plus the 4 feet.
The issue of encroaching the fence, like the retaining wall, is a different matter. If they wanted to extend the fence into the right-of-way, they would have to get an encroachment permit. And that was the issue brought up with the retaining walls, is encroaching into a right-of-way.
So it should be an interesting deferral agreement. We'll be reading here soon.
Good question. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Let's go to item number four. This is a inter-local cooperation agreement with Davis County, Davis County Cities for UPDES general permit. I'm assuming, Lisa, you're taking this? Is that right?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item you have before you is an inter-local agreement with Davis County and all the other cities in Davis County for the UPDES general permit. This may look familiar. We've adopted this almost every five years, just looking back, 2011, 2016. So every five years or so, the coalition, the stormwater coalition reviews this. But essentially, the counties are getting together so that we can jointly provide stormwater education and materials because we're required under our permit to do so. And so it's just a cost-saving measure for the stormwater coalition for the cities. So I couldn't really find any major changes. This one will go until 2026. But again, if we don't combine resources with other communities, then we have to do it on our own. So staff certainly recommends entering into this and recommends adoption of Resolution 21-25.
Any questions for Lisa?
I move we adopt Resolution 21-25, the inter-local agreement for the UPDES.
I second that.
Motion to second. Let's see what I'll call out. Councilwoman Meacham?
Aye.
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 Where Bill, where's Bill sitting?
He says aye.
He said aye, so that motion passes unanimously.
Oh, did he?
All right.
I projected my voice, like Councilmember Enz is right now.
Let's go to item number five. This is a stormwaters facility maintenance agreement with the Hive. Lisa, you want to talk about this again?
Yes. So this next item is a proposed stormwater facilities maintenance agreement with the project, the Hive. This is the first time you've seen this maintenance agreement, but it is now required under our stormwater permit with the state. There's a lot of new requirements and retention requirements and long-term maintenance of stormwater facilities under our own permit. And so we have some options under those obligations, but what we're trying to do with this agreement is sort of put that obligation of inspection on the property owner, because they're private facilities. So this agreement says that you have to maintain the stormwater facilities as originally designed or get an amendment. You have to, so maintain them, inspect them annually, and provide the city with that inspection. Eventually, we are working on some ordinance amendments to address this and actually put it in our ordinance, that this is a requirement of all new developments, you know, that are, that are subject to this provision of our permit. So we're still working on those ordinance amendments. In my opinion, we have the authority and the obligation to require this even without the ordinance because the, our permit with the state requires it. So what we would like to do eventually is bring you this stormwater management agreement, and you approve it as deformed. So we don't have to bring these to you. But we haven't done that yet. So this is the first one that you're seeing with the Hive. We may make some amendments and tweaks to this, but we were just trying to get this in place. This is the first development that's really subject to this provision. So hopefully, you can approve this stormwater maintenance agreement with the Hive, and we will be bringing back more ordinance provisions and standard forms later as, as we complete those. So staff's recommending approval of this stormwater facilities maintenance agreement with the Hive.
And so Lisa, are you going to have to do one of these for virtually every subdivision that's out there?
I think it's subdivisions over one acre. So the, the large subdivisions, yes. They will be agreeing contractually to maintain their private stormwater systems and to inspect and certify them annually. And that's coming down from the state through our permit.
What happens when we've got areas that don't have an active association?
The obligation will fall similar to, you know, if any association is defunct to, to the property owners within that area. I believe the city also has some authority to go in and maintain and fix and charge the property owners. But this agreement will run with the land. It will be on everyone's title that has interest in the facilities, which is essentially interest in the, the common areas and things like that, in common facilities. So it's similar to any private area that has private streets or, you know, new, we're just adding this to the list of things that we need to be a little bit more diligent about because it's easy to ignore stormwater systems below ground. And they certainly cause some problems, you know, coming into our system, which we are liable and responsible for. So the state's putting the burden on us to check and ensure that all waters flowing into our system have been adequately maintained and properly discharged.
We have all the problems that we had with the subdrain systems primarily in the western part of the city, the, the north half, northwest quadrant. We increased rates to work on those things. Does that include all of those properties on the website?
This is only, this new contractual obligation is only for projects moving forward. We will not be going back retroactively to existing systems.
Okay, that's what I was...
Until otherwise authorized by law.
Good questions, Councilman Enz. More questions for Lisa?
A motion that we approve the stormwater facilities maintenance agreement between Centerville City and CW, the Hive LLC, for the Hive Development Project.
Second.
Second.
Give it to Bill.
Stephanie, I guess.
Okay, you got that, Stephanie. Bill deferred to her.
I deferred to him, so wherever you want it.
Yeah, sorry. Let's do a roll call out. Councilwoman Ivy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fillmore?
Aye.
Councilwoman McEwen?
Aye.
Councilman Enz?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Meacham?
Aye.
That motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next item, item number six, is CDBG subrecipient agreement with Davis County for ADA pedestrian ramps. We have Lisa on here as a staff rep, but do you want to talk about it, or?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This one is another agreement for the CDBG grant funds to add to our ADA ramps. And this may sound familiar because we've, we've already entered into a resolution saying we support the project and we want to apply for the funds. And so this is just the subrecipient award with the county saying, okay, we, we agree to abide by the terms and conditions of the grant. So we're just recommending approval of the CDBG subrecipient agreement with Davis County for our ADA ramp project.
In the amount of $75,000.
In the amount of $75,000.
We were, this has been great to help us with these costs, as we've talked about in the past. This is definitely an obligation. Honestly, in Centerville City, it's hard to qualify for some CDBG funds because the focus is low, moderate income, but also there is safety, you know, special, special needs or, or critical infrastructure that benefits those with disabilities. So this is where we can benefit in Centerville. We have been on notice that we won't get this award next year. So we, Jacob and I, will be working on another project that will benefit Centerville that we'll apply for. And there are a number of things that we can pursue. So we'll come to you in the future with, again, a potential resolution to pursue CDBG funds next year. I would motion that we approve Resolution 21-36.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Enz has a second that time. Councilman McEwen made the motion. Councilwoman Meacham?
Aye.
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 That motion passes five zero. Item number seven, this is an item that was tabled from August 3rd. This is a municipal code amendment related to golf carts. We have a big, long history on this, but do you want to give us a summary, Lisa?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have proposed municipal code amendments to allow golf carts on city streets as now allowed by state law. At our last meeting, the council asked staff to do a little bit more research to find out what other Davis County cities, how they're regulating golf carts. I, I should disclose that I am not a golfer, but I do know a lot of people that golf. But anyway, I did have to do some research. There are 12 golf courses approximately, between 10 and 14, depending on what website you go to. And 10 out of the 14 cities have golf courses. So 10 cities have golf courses, but I was not able to find any cities that have enacted an ordinance yet, regu, or allowing golf carts on city streets. The only ordinance that I could find was North Salt Lake that affirmatively said that golf carts can be used on golf courses. So yay for them for being, stating the obvious. So I think, you know, this is a new statute, allowing golf carts on city streets. I think you've heard from staff, and I think it's a policy decision that we respectfully turn over to the council, how you'd like to address this. If you are inclined to approve this ordinance, I did make some suggested redline changes, just based on your discussion, because I thought there was some good discussion last time, and there might be some things that, that we should tighten up. So with that, I did put in, and this might have come from the city engineer, but that golf carts may not be operated on any city street with a limit, a speed limit greater than 25 miles per hour, or this suggested change, or with a grade greater than 8%. So this would avoid some of our steep hillsides and, I'm sorry, maybe it was the chief, I don't know who to give that good idea to. And then I also said that actually, I took out the whole part that, that just, you can only do it on, on city streets. You can't even cross the big streets. And then also have a specific provision that prohibits golf carts from being operated on any sidewalk. on any sidewalk and reduce the age limit from our previous recommendation of eighteen down to sixteen. But again, the age limit was a discussion by the council. So if you're inclined to adopt it, I would suggest adopting the revised version with those suggested changes and any others that the council would like to add.
I also would like to, Chief and I did discuss the eight percent and how do we, you know, we're creating a map, and then how do we enforce this? And this gets really challenging and where they can or can't go and might have these breaks. So now we're talking about an enforcement issue and how do we, you know, decide that, you know, eight percent. But anyway, I'll let Chief elaborate a little bit more in our conversation.
Yeah, so I think the ordinance, the way it's been put together, has some good language in there. I talked with the city engineer about the grade, the eight percent grade. The concern that I have are Chase Lane, eighteen twenty-five north, some of these more steep, longer streets, Oak Ridge. And consulting with him, he suggested the eight percent. So again, I think there's some, there's some changes and recommendations in that change that make me feel more comfortable about it. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable because I think what we're, what will happen is it kind of opens up a can of worms to where now you allow them to drive, and I think everybody can recognize that people, once they kind of get the idea we can drive these, now we can drive them anywhere. And so it will become an enforcement issue. We'll probably see them running up and down, you know, different roads around town that it might have the thirty, like Fourth East, thirty-five mile an hour zone. It might try to, they might be trying to cross Main Street more, Parish Lane. So it is gonna be, I think it will open up a little bit of a can of worms for us. That part of I'm not, I'm not real excited about, but I think the intent, again, you know, looking at historic area of Centerville, that little area there, probably not any harm to drive around there with a golf cart at low speed. So I'm not, I'm not like seriously opposed to it. I think it is a policy decision, and we'll do our best to enforce if you do pass it.
So if it is, if it does pass, then we would want to get together administratively and develop a map and put it on our website saying, this is where golf carts are permitted. But again, it does still come down to enforcement.
Yeah.
As right now, we use officer discretion, and that's worked really well. We cited examples of where people were safe using golf carts and times when we've had officers discipline or pull someone over or because they weren't being safe. So our officer discretion is working really well at this point, and they exercise that a hundred times a day.
All the time.
So, I mean, that's currently what we're doing now. I'm not saying, again, this is a policy decision, but it's still an officer discretion going forward with or without this policy.
I guess I have a question and a couple of comments. Number one, another thing that if we were to pass it, I think we need to state that it has to have four wheels because you talked about the three wheels.
I like that.
And I've driven a lot of them, so reading through that, I thought four wheels would do away with that.
Yeah.
But my other concern is to pass it that way, sixteen-year-olds are driving cars. If you're not gonna let, it's younger, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds that are driving these because they can't drive cars. They're riding them instead of bicycles or electric scooters, which are, they're all over town. But if you feel like the officers can make a discretion and they're not gonna get after every little kid that drives in a normal little road and not, but I'm all for, if there is a child doing anything dangerous, I would want that child to be stopped because I'd want him to be protected. But if you feel like that the police can make that discretion and we're not going to get after every kid that enters the road, then I don't have a problem with not passing it.
So if it did pass, you see a golf cart in the Dix Market parking lot. I'm just, I'm saying, to me, that's a ticketable offense because you took serious risks to get there, right?
Right, right.
So, I mean, there's gonna be discretion, but there'll be areas where it'll be just plain, cut and dry.
Yeah.
You did something really dumb and you put yourself and other people at risk by doing it.
Right, right. Like I said, I'm fine to leave it at the police discretion as long as I don't feel like we're gonna be chasing these little kids around on golf carts that are doing, you know.
But I'm considering even allowing the crossing of the street. Not driving on the busy, faster streets, but the crossing of the streets makes sense to me because.
It all comes down to acceleration.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, but we, we assume that a biker, you know, and the pedestrians cross these busy streets and the bikers cross the busy streets, and we just assume that there has to be judgment about how fast you can get across and how big of a space, the gap you have.
Yeah, to me, though, the problem is, is that it's not, it's not a roadworthy vehicle. It's not designed to be hit in any way, shape, or form.
I understand that.
So.
Neither is a bike and neither is a person, though.
And it is, and it is much heavier than a bicycle.
Right.
You can do more damage with it than you can with a bicycle.
Yeah, all you need is to be low on a charge and jump out into a street thinking you have the acceleration you don't have, and then you're in the middle of Main Street with oncoming traffic. I just, to me, even off-road vehicles have restrictions about what they can transit across depending on whether they're road legal or not. So even if you have the acceleration, you're still restricted. And I don't have a problem saying this is a special class of vehicle that has restrictions as to where it can go.
And there again, I think to your concern, look, we, so we have a speed limit around town, right? So on Fourth East, the speed limit is thirty-five. We don't stop people at thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Oh, good to know.
Okay, unless like it's snowing and it's really bad weather out there. What I'm trying to say is we use discretion. Officers use discretion every day, all day long, on what we're gonna enforce and what we're not gonna enforce and how strict we're gonna be. And it goes to the reasonableness of it. So if an officer sees something and, you know, it's not a big deal, there's no, there's no harm being done, it appears to be fairly safe, probably not gonna do anything about it, even though it might be technically a violation of law. Officer discretion is used all the time, and our officers use really good judgment on that. So I don't feel comfortable with allowing, I want to keep it the way it is, the way it's written, the twenty-five mile an hour speed restriction in those areas. That would be my.
So then remind me what brought this up, if it's just within the confines. I mean, there is not a large area in Centerville that does not cross one of the higher speed limit roads. So what, remind me why this came to the table and why we felt like it was designed.
So we did have a couple of, there were a couple of homes in the older area of town. To my knowledge, there were two families that had golf carts. And they were allowing their younger kids to drive these golf carts from A to B within the older part of town here. And we had one individual that saw that and became upset and started making complaints. And that's when we realized that the state law had changed recently to allow a municipality to pass an ordinance that would allow a golf cart on roads under, with restrictions. So that's what brought, that's kind of the impetus that brought it to the point where it's at right now is we had one individual that saw some younger kids driving a golf cart in our little residential area here and became quite upset about it.
So my view has kind of changed in the last month. Two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, as I was coming home from church on Sunday afternoon, a motor augmented bicycle with two kids on it zipped across two fifty east, no, zipped on two fifty east across eleven hundred north, both twenty-five mile an hour streets. Number of cars were on their way home from church. The second car in front of me came within inches of nailing those kids. I was quite upset. I followed them home. They took a long route to try and keep me from following them home, and I just followed them home. And then when they went in the backyard, I went and spoke to the parents. I don't know, there is such differential in decent judgment on kids' part. I think I'm not inclined to do anything to encourage it any longer. Where I was, one of the ones that brought it forward before.
And I'm okay because I was encouraging it too because I felt like there was a little bit going on, and I didn't want our police officers to be harassed for not handling it. But I think where we understand that they have discretion and they're, you know, if you've got some people that are driving them, they're not dangerous and they're not, you know, they're not doing anything, they're, I didn't understand that police had the discretion to, to make decisions like that. So I'm probably fine with that, too.
Well, administratively, we had a great conversation, right? We included all the officers and we discussed the merits, the pros and cons, and it was all over the place on, in terms of how this is. But really, what I heard was the stories of the case studies, right? I dealt with this, and this is how I handled it. I saw this, and this is how I handled it. In this case, Chief, and Councilmember Nitz's point, you're called out, but you didn't witness it. I mean, there's not much you can do.
Yeah.
And so you're gonna do exactly what Councilmember Nitz did, maybe have a conversation with the parents saying it was observed, you need to watch your kids.
Yeah.
So that's, that's it. We're calling out officers to do that because they didn't witness it. So unless they witness it anyway, there's not much we can do to enforce the law.
Yeah, and honestly, when we're dealing with juveniles, it's, it's from a practical matter, trying to like send them to juvenile court on something, that's not even gonna happen.
Well, like I said, I just don't want the kids to feel like they're in trouble all the time if they're doing it. But I wouldn't, there'd be no reason to pass it if we were gonna keep the age at sixteen because sixteen-year-olds are driving cars. It's the, like I said, the twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds that want to drive the golf carts because.
Because they can't drive a car.
Because they can't drive a car. It's the same with the little electric scooters and stuff. Most of them are twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds. It's not too many sixteen-year-olds that are.
Yeah. So I mean, from my point of view, it's, I think by passing this ordinance, we kind of do open up, we kind of give a green light.
Right.
But also a red light at the same time. So it might be a little bit confusing to people like, oh, we can drive a golf cart on the road now, but we can't drive it here, we can't drive it here, but we can drive it. So next thing we know, they're gonna be, you know, pushing the boundaries. As far as how I think I would, I would like to approach this as a law enforcement methodology is to just advise our officers, look, use your best judgment. If it looks like that it's a reasonable thing, they're not going fast, they're not, it's, it's not creating a safety hazard, they're in a decent area of town, there's not gonna be a problem, don't worry about it. If it's, if it's gonna, if it looks like they're way too young a kids, they're on streets they shouldn't be on, they're not driving very well, we're getting complaints on them, let's go talk to the parents and have them deal with it. That's kind of the approach that I'd like to take on it.
But it is in fact illegal currently.
It is in fact illegal, yes.
Yeah, I just don't know how comfortable I feel. And we've had multiple conversations with this tone on the council of, well, you know, we won't change the law, but we'll just selectively enforce or, you know, I mean, recalls in my mind the conversation about the parking ordinance, right? And I'd really rather try to be as clear as possible, and I know it's impossible to cover everything, but when we find situations like this, I'd really rather be clear with what we're, message we're sending with the law. And so if we do think it's okay under certain circumstances, let's make it legal. And if we don't, let's.
And that is a policy decision that you're.
You shouldn't allow your golf cart on the street at all because it's illegal. And so to me, we do have to answer the question policy-wise as a council, do we feel comfortable with golf carts on the street at all and under what circumstances? And then we should outline under what circumstances.
But then he did just give us an example of you're going thirty-seven, thirty-eight. I mean, so the officers are using their discretion, and it's the same with the little.
But then they're breaking the speed limit, and so then they get pulled over for that.
But he just said they're not, the officer has the discretion.
We don't have enough police officers to pull over everybody who goes two miles an hour over.
So that's what he was.
That's why I would think we would want to pass it.
So I'm thinking that we.
I don't have a problem passing it, and I think what we need to make sure we're understanding is there's a, there's a distinct difference between a peace officer and law enforcement. We have peace officers.
Right.
Okay with the definition.
Sure.
And as such, we have to give them discretion to be able to do their job effectively and not create animosity because law enforcement in its purest form is not a great thing, in my opinion, because there is no leniency. You see it, you report it, you take it. And that doesn't create any sort of harmony with the community. So I don't see any reason to change that from a peace officer to a law enforcement. I am in agreement with Tammy, though, that if we are going to make it a situation of we want them to have discretion, like you're saying, are they sixteen, thirteen, or fourteen? Personally, I don't really care as long as they're not doing something that's egregiously stupid and gonna get somebody else hurt.
And I think.
And at that point, that's where a peace officer says, okay, this isn't even a law enforcement issue. This is, you're gonna do something that's gonna get one of these six kids hanging off this golf cart killed, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk to you about the law. That, to me, is fine, but they need the tools to be able to do that. So I'm in agreement with Tammy that it's okay to pass.
That's what the state said, is you almost have to go with a, a child that can reach the gas pedal because you're thirteen-year-olds or fourteen-year-olds, they don't have driver's license, they don't have any ID. So the police can't be following them around and trying to ID them and see if they're old. And then we're putting a lot of burden on our police officers if they've got to figure out if they're fourteen or fifteen or thirteen or, I mean, you know, I've got.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
So that, that would be, like I said, I feel fine with, with seeing how it goes with the, using the discretion.
Well, so, I mean, like I said at the beginning.
But if somebody else wants to have it passed, that's fine, too. But I would want to low, how would you feel about the age limit, Tammy?
My, I think.
The state had a huge.
Isn't quite getting my point. My point is if we're talking about the police officers needing their tools, then the tool is to have no ordinance making them legal because they're currently illegal.
Right.
And so then it's just like in any situation, I mean, if you find stupid happens, then the city says, now we can do something about it because you broke the law. What I'm saying, though, is that I hear from this dais, but really, it's okay in certain circumstances, and we want you to ignore it. And I don't feel comfortable with that. So if we feel that it's okay in certain circumstances, I want us to be clear about what we feel it's okay.
Yeah, I can respect that. And like I mentioned before, the way that it's been drafted, it, I think it's a pretty good ordinance, the way it's drafted, if you're gonna do it.
With the red lines.
With the red lines.
With the red lines.
What are you gonna do about the age?
If you feel like you want to do it, and it's a policy decision, the way it's been drafted, I think is a pretty good.
I think what Councilmember Fillmore is saying is just that, we, sixteen, again, is what we're recommending as the minimum age. Now, if a kid is fourteen or sixteen, it's, it's hard to distinguish that. But if the child looks like they have the golf cart under control, that's where officer discretion came into play. So I think that's what Councilwoman Fillmore is saying, is now we're creating somewhere where if they are younger than sixteen and they're being erratic, then now Chief has a tool to actually discipline or work with the parents a little bit more, saying, this is a law. Is that correct, Councilwoman Fillmore?
Yeah, the situ, the question for me is the bottom line question of, do we feel comfortable in these geographical circumstances, on these roads with these speed limits, with people who are of reasonable capability driving a golf cart around? I'd like to know what the answer to that question is. Is it yes or no? If it's yes, then I say we pass this. If it's no, then we don't.
Well, the ultimate test is.
I say yes.
Throw it out there and see what happens.
I vote we approve.
But what are we gonna put, you're just gonna put them.
The ultimate test.
And I don't mind leaving the age because I do think that's reasonable.
And we're okay with the age consent.
I'm okay with leaving the age of sixteen.
I do, you know, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have, again, something we can work with.
Some kind of a map or something.
We can work with Bryce to develop a webpage on safety. So relative to the age.
Well, yeah, what's the age we're talking about here?
Yeah, so to your point, you were talking about the age. To me, the whole reason eighteen made sense is because they have legal liability for their actions. Anything under eighteen, it's on the parents. So if you want to pick an age that you think is reasonable, if it's sixteen, fourteen, to me, it doesn't really matter because if they're doing something erratic, they should get pulled over anyway. You know, it's, it's really kind of academic at that point because their parents have the liability either way. So are you thinking fourteen, fifteen?
I'd feel comfortable with as low as fourteen. I think fifteen makes sense because that's learner permit age.
I would want you to go to fourteen if I was gonna, if I was gonna do it.
Because fifteen is what?
Learner permit age.
Well, there's no, there's no motion on the table yet, so it's wide open if you want to go for it with an age of fifteen and see what happens. you wanna go for it with an age of 15 and see what happens.
What's the max in speed these are each?
Well, if you remove the governor, not that I've ever done that. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I think, I mean, most of them are designed about 25, but I've heard they can go up to 35 and yeah, maybe modify them. But I do wanna say that the state law does already define golf cart and it says that it has to have not less than three wheels in contact with the ground and, um, be a weight less than 1,800 pounds.
Can we not put less than 14?
Can we add?
Less than four wheels.
Less than 14.
I mean, because, because we're not allowing our, our kids under 16 to drive anything unless they have an electric bicycle or one of these things.
Designed to operate at low speeds.
Phil talked about, that goes, that goes that, that speed. I mean, so.
Well, there are a lot of things that go that speed now.
There is.
Okay, well, let me, let me try a motion on precise and see what happens here. A motion that we approve ordinance 202117 with red line changes as defined except for we are modifying the age from 16 to 14 years of age.
Did you wanna put the four wheels on there?
But then if, having four wheels.
No, you said, it says three.
And even if it were in state code, I would wanna repeat it here so that it's.
That the vehicle must be four wheels qualifying.
Yes.
As a golf cart?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd second that.
All right.
All right, motion second, Councilman McEwen.
Aye.
Councilman Fillmore.
Aye.
Councilman Ence? You there?
I'm thinking.
Okay, we'll go, we'll go to Councilwoman Ivy.
He said nay.
Nay?
He did. He did.
Oh, nay, nay, Councilman Ence, Councilwoman Ivy.
Aye.
Aye.
So we got four to one, uh, that passes.
Now we have to figure out how Lisa stays in good with the bar, admitting that she doesn't golf. How do you maintain licensure that way?
I skip a lot of conferences and fundraisers.
There you go. Oh, there you go.
More time for working on the law.
All right, uh, let's go to item number eight. This is, um, budget levy, tax levy, statutory updates, uh, Lisa.
Hey, I don't know if this is like a three meter or 10,000 meter race, but we are rounding the corner. Last one.
Yes.
Disco code amendments regarding budget. So when we were doing our tax, uh, truth and taxation, I noticed that the, we don't have to adopt our budget, our final budget till September 1st. And in our code, we still had August 17th. That was changed a couple of years ago. So we're just changing that in two places. And then also that the accumulated fund balance was increased just this legislative year in 2021 from 25% to 35%. So we're very happy about that. So staff's recommending approval of ordinance 202120 on budgets and tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Aye.
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 That passes five zero. Thank you.
And credit to Nate on the fund balance maximum, so he probably.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Nate.
Item number nine is a summary action calendar on three items. We do have the staff representatives here if you have any questions, Lieutenant Ackerson and Mike Carlson. But these are Ford Police Interceptor Vehicles, Water Trucks and Caterpillar Model Paving Comp Action Roller. Any questions or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's take a vote. It's, it's over the dollar. Councilman McEwen.
Aye.
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 That passes five zero as well. Great. Uh, item number 10, this is the, thank you, Mike. Uh, this is the monthly financial report. This is not, uh, it's there for your information. If there's any questions, we have Jake and Nate here. This is not, we normally report on a quarter basis. So is there any questions on the monthly financial report? Anything that you want us to say about it that is critical, Nate? Okay.
Thanks, Nate.
We appreciate that.
She just went up a notch in my book.
So, so that is there for the information. It's there for the public's information. Do, do, does any council have any questions for Nate? Okay. Great, let's go to item number 11. This is the minutes review and acceptance. We have one, two, three, four, five, six minutes that we are approving. Is there any, uh, changes or on any of those six meetings to any of these minutes from anyone?
I move we accept the minutes as recorded.
Second.
Before we vote on that, I do wanna talk about the minutes from August 7th.
Oh, okay.
Uh, which is our special meeting minutes. And Mayor, I'm just gonna lay it out. I've had so many calls from people who are extremely upset that you linked Mr. Flowers as my neighbor in your report back to the city council. It said it felt like it sent a chilling shockwave through the community that based on who you know or where you live, your comments will not be accepted by the body. And that has come to me from, gosh, I've lost count. That's basically what they've said. They felt that if a citizen comes forward, where they live or who they know or who they may be neighbors of has no bearing on anything related to a city matter. And in that, in that regard, that's not gonna go on these minutes, but I think it does, it will go on the minutes from tonight that, that I have listed that as a concern relative to the August 7 minutes.
All right, so noted. I tried to do my best to, to, to speak politely as I can and if that offended some people, I certainly apologize.
Yeah, they just didn't like having his name linked with me because he lived across the street from me. They thought that that doesn't make any difference to what he said.
All right, so, uh, we have a motion and then a second. All in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Pause.
Aye.
All right, let's go to item number 12. This is a city council report, Councilman McEwen.
I have a little red note in here somewhere. Gosh, it's been so long, I probably lost my little red note. Well, I lost my little pink note. I didn't have too much to tell you. The Transportation Board just hasn't been meeting and the Utopia has upped their employees from 83 to 96 and, uh.
83 to what?
96. And Sarat, Pleasant Grove and Syracuse have both signed up with Utopia.
So to, to Councilman McEwen's point, so hired more customer service, even though some of these areas, they might provide their own fiber. We, Utopia's providing customer service as well as some more surveyors. They're breaking records with how many signups they have, but we do have a number of cities coming on board with Utopia.
Yeah.
So what's the good news on our refund this next year?
The, the refund, we're working on that.
We did get 125,000 last year.
And we'll get that again this year and we're working on the financials of, of how Utopia and UIA refund each, how they refund each other, so.
Good luck with that.
But UIA is doing really well.
Good luck with that. Anything else?
That's all I got?
The silver lining to COVID.
Yeah, yeah. They really had a silver lining.
Thank you, Councilman McEwen. Item 13, Mayor's Report, lateness of the hour. I just need to confirm with everybody, there is the gala on Friday with CPT and I think we have three takers taking up six. Councilman McEwen, did you, did you get back?
No, I don't, I'm confused because on the gala, don't, doesn't the RDA vote to support a table on that? So I'm confused how we're funding it.
We, we budget out of the RDA every year.
Yeah, we have a public vote where we agree to fund it.
When we approve the budget.
Yeah. But we have a public vote to approve that specific item for a particular reason.
Sure.
My, my recollection is last time we discussed it or two times ago, there was the sentiment that this is worthy of supporting. They're our sister, they're our partner. The building is ours. We own it. We want nothing but to see them succeed. And so for us to even consider not participating seems like.
Oh, no, it's a symbolic vote.
It's a symbolic thing.
It's a symbolic vote every year to say, yes, we are in support.
I, okay, but I feel comfortable just having it in the budget.
Oh, it is in the budget. I'm just, I was asking how it's funded. It's in the budget. But I'm saying there's been a symbolic vote in years past.
You can vote right now?
No, we're not in RDA.
I think as long as you.
You could notify the RDA directors to approve the budget.
If you, just if you realize that that is maybe.
General approval to administration. Just kidding, sorry.
It, it has been voted on. I'll go that far and say it has always been. And so maybe if from now on, I think that is a symbol to the community that we support that. So maybe from now on, we need to do that.
Sounds good.
But that wasn't the answer.
But it's symbolic. Okay, so now, what was we going on? That wasn't the answer. We resolved that problem. Next.
George, were you coming?
Uh, no, I'm not gonna be able to make it.
Okay, Councilman Ence couldn't vote too, so that means there's, for the three of you, two, two spots for each of you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to City Manager Report. Brett?
I don't have much to report this, this week. In two weeks, I might have a little bit more. We do have a budget amendment that we're proposing in two weeks to discuss what we have discussed tonight. I do wanna say I appreciate the discussion. I apologize, I haven't participated as much. I kind of was trying to take care of the technical side, but I, I appreciate staff, Lisa, Mike, Nate and Jacob and all that filling in.